Recording in progress.
Okay, good morning. I want to call to order, this is a, actually, we've made this a special meeting and workshop because there are a few items that will take action on today. We also have, I just want to mention to the public that councilperson Marasco will be joining us telephonically for this. The other difference with these workshops, if you've not attended one before, is we'll take public comment throughout the workshop, so we can also take public comment at the end, but as we're reacting as council to these topics, if you want to raise your hand and come up and make a comment, what we try to do to manage time is to keep each of these topics around 20 minutes or so, but, so that will include the public interaction as well. So, as I mentioned, it's a combination workshop and special meeting, so the first piece that we have on the agenda today is requiring action and it's an appointment, under appointments, I should say. And it says reaffirmation because at our last regular meeting, prior to the regular meeting, we did come out of executive session in a public setting and appointed or named Ellen Lorraine McCabe as our city manager, but I think to put ourselves in a solid place here in the light of day and in public, we put it on the agenda to sort of reaffirm that in a public setting here. So, Alex, do we just call, do I just call, ask for a motion to reaffirm?
Exactly, that'll work.
Okay, up and down?
And as you mentioned, this has already happened, but just to ensure robust public knowledge.
Sure, yeah. Okay, I appreciate that, Alex. So, it's just up and down then, oh, okay, all right. So, with that said, I'll call for a motion to reaffirm the appointment of Ellen Lorraine McCabe to the position of city manager.
I'll make a motion that we confirm Ellen Lorraine McCabe as our city manager.
Second?
I'll second that motion, just to let you know I am here.
Okay, thanks, Amy. Okay, so we got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we moved that one pretty quickly, that didn't take 20 minutes. So, the next one, Rich, I see you're here, so if you want to come up, I think this comes from as well, you make your way to the stage, so to speak. During budget season, we were made aware of, you know, the increasing financial pressures of all of our volunteer groups and particularly volunteer fire department, they gave requests and they have in the past for funding assistance. So, Rich is coming forward today.
And our treasurer, Brian.
Okay, yeah, introduce yourself, and they're really just going to kind of give us some background so that we're not, again, we're going to make a decision on this today, but we want to be informed, we want the public to be informed about the situation that you're in. So, I appreciate it. Rich, you want to introduce yourselves and go take it from there?
Yes, I'm Richard Bunning, the president of Lewis Fire Department. I'm born and raised in Lewis. Seen a lot of changes, been in the fire service since 1990, and I've seen huge changes in the fire service since 1990. So, we'll discuss some of that further. And I have brought with me our treasurer of 34 years?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one years.
Thirty-one.
The Lewis Fire Department, Brian Pepper.
Yeah, I'm Brian Pepper, I grew up in Selviville, I've been in Lewis for 35 years.
Can you just come a little closer, just so people on the...
Yeah, I'm Brian Pepper, I grew up in Selviville, I've lived in Lewis for 35 years, of course, seen Sussex County sort of grow and change, and here we are today, and our fire service has changed a lot in the 31 years I've been the treasurer. And when I took over as treasurer, we had two part-time employees during the day to help run the ambulance five days a week. Today, we have 26 full-time employees and 15 part-time employees to run the ambulance. Demand for service has exploded. Last year, we ran just south of 1,000 fire rescue calls and 6,000 ambulance calls out of our fire district. The biggest problem, you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
The biggest problems that we continue to face is we're a volunteer fire department with paid staff, and people moving here, of course, for the most part, aren't younger. We do have some people that want to volunteer and help, but they're not capable of going in and fighting fires, they're great for administrative, and some do the best they can, but young people can't afford to live here anymore. So, the biggest thing that we're up against is we're having to hire more and more staff to get our equipment on the street to take care of the town and the surrounding communities, and that comes at a cost. And as a volunteer fire department, our entire budget is totally flexible because there's no money that we get from the state, the county, ambulance billing, the city, anybody that's guaranteed. At any time, you know, when the state has financial problems, grant needs, first place they go to cut the budget, we're in grant need. A lot of our money that comes from the county comes from building permits, so as building permit money goes down, our money goes down. We have no consistent supply of money to fund our operations. Our budget for this year is $3.7 million, and of that payroll accounts for $2.6 million, and that does not include any equipment replacement. We have to buy all these ambulances and fire trucks out of our budget. A new fire engine today is just south of $1 million. New ambulance, $400,000. Seems odd that a box with lights on, it's $400,000, but it is. And so, we're just asking for the city to step up and help us and help us push the county and the state to...
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that, could you illuminate the public about the, how the county disperses the funding?
The county budget this year is $5.7 million for the fire service. That's divided among 22 fire departments in this county, and it's pretty much split equally. Whether you're Slaughter Beach that runs 200 calls a year, or Lewis that runs 7,000.
So, it's not based on calls, population?
Not really based on calls, population, or where the money's coming from.
Okay. And that's met some resistance in the past, and that's been brought up in the county, is what I'm understanding?
Yes, we, I've spent the last six years fighting with the county council, we have two out of five council members that are in favor of doing something.
Okay.
The governor is getting ready to sign a bill that gives the county the authority to collect an emergency services tax. Now, whether they will do that or not, I don't know. The people in Georgetown, for the most part, in my opinion, not the department's opinion, but my opinion, are too busy patting herself on the back and saying we haven't raised taxes in 30 years. You know, we're not the same county we were 30 years ago. So, all we're doing is asking the city to help us in any way that you can, and we totally understand that really only 16% of our calls happen in the city limit, but we need all the help we can get on a consistent basis.
I think that's, I think that's one of the things that I would have a question about, you said 16%.
Mm-hmm. You don't mute Joe by chance?
Yeah, I don't know.
Might, yeah, you might be on mute.
16%, so I think from our point of view, we want to make sure that we're spending our taxpayers' money very wisely, so we want to make sure that it's, we're giving an equitable amount compared to the other areas that fund you. And if you could help us figure out how to do that, that would be helpful, because we have so many other things on our plate. We have our library, we have infrastructure, we have all this stuff that we need to get done, so.
The number I recall, you mentioned 16 or 15%, I think the number that was brought to us by Gordon in budget season was around 650K, but that was...
Well, how Gordon had gotten that, he'd taken our $4.4 million income from the year before and taken 16%.
Sure, yeah.
That's how, that's how he got to his number.
And is your feeling the same, like, what is your feeling as a treasurer that this...
I just need all the assistance I can get. I don't really care how you calculate it or where it comes from. I mean, just an idea that I presented to the county, my daughter went to grad school in Tallahassee, Florida, and I got electric bill that had a fire service fee on it for $18 every month. So, I called Tallahassee and I said, and the lady, first thing the lady said, "Oh, that's not negotiable." I said, "No, I don't want to negotiate it, I just want to know why."
How can I get one?
Right, and, absolutely. And the lady explained to her that in Tallahassee, they have two universities and a state capitol, and they needed to increase their emergency services for the town. And they figured out the biggest problem that they have in request for emergency services came from students living in town. So, they went out and they put an $18 fee every month on everybody's electric meter, and it helped solve their problem.
Do you know if it was different for commercial properties?
I do not.
And institutions?
But every place had electric, well, my daughter lived in a big condominium rental, so every place had a meter, so that's how they collected it. Now, what they would do for an industrial facility or a hotel or something that had one meter, I don't know.
Okay.
But, you know, I thought that was realistic and logical thing, it gave us a constant flow of income and it helped solve their problem. And I thought, well, that's certainly an equitable way to do that.
You have any other ideas?
Well, yes, to call Mike Vincent and get the county council to move forward with this tax in some way quickly.
Okay.
I think one of the things that should be highlighted is that this is not, this issue is not unique to Lewis. Volunteer fire departments, I've gotten a few questions about, well, what's going on, why, I said, this is, the volunteer fire department model is dying. You can't recruit anymore, you can't retain, and I mean, it's kind of stunning to find out you have 26 paid employees and a number of part-time employees. So, I think one of the things that we need to keep in mind in talking to folks in the community and people here and online is, this is not unique to Lewis.
No, it's a nationwide problem, and even in the paid departments, it's a problem. They can't get enough paid staff to do this work. During the day, we have nine people on duty here in Lewis. As of next week, they're moving back to town because our construction's done, and at night, we have six on. And they used to just run the ambulance, but now, if we do not have these people tied up on ambulance calls, if a fire call comes in, they put that first truck on the street and respond while they're waiting for the volunteers to get from home, but...
When do you do your budget each year?
Well, on a calendar year.
So, you'll start again in January?
Yes, sir.
Or you'll start your process, I assume, at the, like, November or December?
Right.
Okay.
Is it accurate that Lewis is the busiest?
We're the busiest, we're the busiest fire department in Kent and Sussex County, and the fifth, and the fifth busiest in the state.
All right. And you have, again, this is just for a lot of people who may not know this, you have a facility in Nassau, and one on 24 as well, so it's not just downtown.
Right, in addition to Savannah Road.
Right.
And do I understand that the state has, they have no, they don't participate in any way in the finance plan?
Yes, the state does, yes.
Okay, what is that, please?
Let me tell you what. The state of Delaware, last year, the income gained 28.8% of our money came from the state of Delaware.
And is that designated in any, to be spent in any way, just a general?
Just a general, it comes from a menagerie of things, it comes from grant need, there's red light camera fines and speeding fines, and every time you get a speeding ticket, there's a fire service fee on there, and that gets divided up between the fire departments and the state. And we also get those insurance, home insurance tax and a health insurance tax, and that gets divided up among the departments.
So, you mentioned a public, I'm sorry, public impact fee that Tallahassee and other has, other folks have had. I know that's pretty common in a lot of areas, public safety fee, they call it, goes to fire department as well as police departments. Are you familiar with some of the models on square footage of homes, like various homes will pay a difference or water flow? These are models that I've heard about and read about, where, again, it's not as simple as a simple flat impact fee per property, but it's based on the size of the home.
No, I'm not aware of that, but in a lot, in a lot of areas where we've researched, it's mainly based upon what the valuation of the home is. So, after the county gets done with their reassessment here, you know, the $8 million house at the beach versus the $80,000 house in Bridgeville, you know, would pay a significant difference if it was based upon that kind of a price thing.
Is there a plan, since apparently not only this in the state, but nationwide, that we're moving from a volunteer organization to a paid organization? Has the state stepped up and created any kind of plan for transition from volunteer to state?
No. They just passed so many regulations right now, to be a volunteer officer in our fire department is incredibly high, hours are incredibly high. It's pushing everything career, everything's being pushed to career. It's sad, but it is, and they're not backing it up. They're dropping all these regulations on us that we have to have this, they're talking about making us change our gear every 10 years, cutting the length of a truck you can keep from 20 to 15 years, things like that are changing. So, it's always sort of pushing more, your guys require more training, nobody wants a volunteer to do that.
Right, but, so they're putting the regs or the restrictions on you, the demands on you, but they're not funding.
Correct, right.
Correct.
The state of Delaware and the counties are currently funding what they call a facet study.
Facet study.
Right, and they have completed their study in Newcastle County and getting ready to start Sussex County, and supposed to be complete by the end of the year. It's a study they're saying will determine how much funding that everybody really needs versus what we're getting, and present a plan, what to do about it.
And that's to be done by the state?
The state and the county. All three counties are participating.
Thank you. Do you, do you break out, do you take the income you know you, or projected income you'll have coming in, separate it from the contributions of the municipalities that you serve? So, you isolate that chunk of money that you need from the municipalities, and then ask them to give their portion of that. Have you tried that?
Well, what we've done in the past, the board of public works has always given us $50,000 for the last number of years, and the city's given us $75,000, and that's, you know, that's all we've really got. I mean, that's, we've, we've come to the board and presented, and as inflation's gone on, that really hasn't helped keep up, but we're grateful for what we are getting.
Well, I think it's important that communities give their fair share. And are we meeting that goal, or are we behind, or do you think we...
They've got a service debt, this is, this was clearly was mentioning, it's like, this is a new, we learned at the budget season, it's like, over the last few years, most companies have debt service, right?
Correct. We currently owe $2.3 million. Part of that's for the construction that we just completed on Savannah Road, and the other part is for the station that was built at Nassau about 10 years ago.
But you're meeting those obligations, correct?
We are meeting our obligations.
And when will those be retired?
We're about 10 years out from wrapping all that up.
Oh, someone with money.
Dialing for dollars.
Okay, so I think from our side, we probably would send this to the finance committee to look at, you know, as you mentioned, some attaching fees, or is it a set, I think one of the things that was mentioned, budget season, was if it was just a set $100, what that would net, you know, sort of looking at the different, but probably working backwards. So, you're saying on average, our contribution should be around 600K, basically?
Based, based upon what our budget is and the percentage of calls in the city limit.
So, about 600,000.
And then, you know, in terms of the other portion about, you know, approaching and putting, applying some pressure to our politicians in the county side, is there an organized way that you've, like, that we could join in your efforts on that, or what are your thoughts there?
Well, that's been part of our problem with the county, is that Lewis and Rehoboth and Milton have pretty much been together in Bethany Beach, the east side, that's all really having the major problem. And the county doesn't want to listen to that, they want to hear what every fire department in the county wants to say, and a lot of these other fire departments aren't facing the same issues we are.
East versus west, county issue.
Yep. I mean, a good example to answer your question, the city of Rehoboth has passed in their budget this year to give this Rehoboth Fire Department $200,000, and they're going to put money away every year for equipment.
In addition to the...
The city is?
Yes.
Okay.
That's just a neighboring example.
Amy?
Yes, so, you know, when I was preparing for this, I was looking at big states, and very much as our firefighters are talking to us, the, like New York, for example, 96% of the fire department fees for the whole state are paid through property tax, and then the balance is paid through sale of equipment and donations. So, my question, and I think it is appropriate, it goes to the finance committee, is can you also, our first finance committee meeting is going to be in July, but you could also be on an August schedule if you wanted. We would love to see your long-term budget for capital equipment, because one of the things we're going to be doing on the finance committee is we are going to do a short-term budget and a long-term budget. So, we want to look at capital investments, that, what the need is, not necessarily the want, but you can list wants, but also needs, and then we can look at your equipment, when do you have to retire existing equipment, but that would be very helpful, so that we're not just looking at a delta, that we have to look at how to help you fill that gap, but actually, if you gave us a projection of, we're going to need a new truck, we're going to need new hoses, whatever it is that you want to put in, that would be very helpful for us to lay out that capital investment in addition to looking at creative ways to address your short gap.
We do have a 10-year apparatus plan in replacing apparatus. Most of our apparatus, we're able to, short of the ambulance, is we're able to make those units last 20 to 25 years. We do have a new $1.4 million ladder truck on order, it's been ordered for two years, and we're still a year out from delivery. So, we do have a plan, and I can put that together for you.
That would be great. If you send that to Ellen Lorraine, then we can have that in the finance committee, that'd be so helpful. Really appreciate that, thank you.
We can do that.
Any other questions? Okay, I appreciate you gentlemen, I appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public that'd like to ask a question or make a comment? I saw Chip, hey, go first, and then we'll go to you next.
Thank you. Chip Davis, 115 East Third Street, and I just want to echo what the gentleman just talking about. I think it's imperative that we get to the county, the state, and also the homeowners associations of all the developments out here, to let them know what's going on, and to get them to be proactive and be part of this solution, too. There's every development, if you've got every development to contribute X amount of dollars or whatever, people have come here, they're accustomed to not paying for a fire service, it automatically comes out, and now this volunteer to donate, they're, they're just not doing it. So, that's one part that would be very good. And just to Councilman Elder's point about the 16%, those are city calls, but as soon as you get outside of the city on all these overcrowded roads, Route 1, Route 24, whatever, you are covered. So, while many citizens may, we were talking about 16% of in-call times, you're covered. When you have an accident out on Route 1, these guys are responding to that. So, that's 16% for city residents, probably bumps up to 30 or 40%. My granddaughter and grandson have both had accidents, one on Plantation Road and one right there at the light at the high school, and Lewis responded to both of those. So, just a quick point on that.
That's a very good point.
Yeah, so anything that you guys can do, like I said, I support these guys, and anything that we can do as a, as a city to get other people, I know you'll do your part, I'm so confident in that, but to get the other parts in the county, and the Lewis Fire District to contribute would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
Dave, did you have a comment?
Dave Beck, I live on Capital Circle here in Lewis. Just a quick question, I, every year, I get two mailings from the Lewis Fire Department and one from the Lewis ambulance service, and I pay money. I'm just wondering how much of they, they money they collect from that?
And we can make these, we can make these attachments on the schedule later, but they did provide us an output, so there, there was a percentage of that was, and also an actual amount, but donations, they have about, close to 19%, which include the, comes from donate, comes from donation, that they have noted here includes the ambulance service. And that's something that we talked about was, do we, you volunteer to do it, do we make that just a compulsory, you know, a fee that's just, it's a mandate, you know, that's another thing we talked about previously. But, because I forget the percentages you met, I think were fairly low in terms of people who actually do respond to those cards in terms of percentages, right?
Very low.
So, you know, yeah, come on up.
We send out about 20,000 mailers for the ambulance policies into our property owners in our fire district, and we only get about 3,500 respond.
Right. And we've spoken before about the fact that some of that poor response could be due to people not understanding that it's a volunteer organization and tries to self-fund, right?
Correct.
And most people, as you said earlier, and which Mr. Davis has spoken to, is that most people who have moved here think that those fees are part of the taxes, the property taxes that they pay, or, you know, whatever.
Well, like the mayor just suggested, the Bethany Beach Fire Department has an agreement with the town of Fennec Colony, South Bethany, Bethany Beach, and Sea Colony, which of course, between those four entities incorporated about 85% of their fire district, and they do put an $85 bill on the property tax bill for an ambulance service that the fire department does get, and if anybody's transported from that home, the same way our ambulance policy works, they will bill their insurance company and they accept whatever they pay, and there's no other bill.
And there's certain, in your mind, Bethany's a good proxy in terms of the geographic area at least that they're covering?
Well...
Or budget, things like that?
The biggest problem that, the biggest problem that we have is the majority of our fire district is outside of any city limit.
Right, right.
And Bethany, 85% of it is in those four communities.
Right.
Okay.
And yet, you're outside of Bethany, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Interesting.
Okay, so, this'll be for Amy and Joe to take up in finance committee next, so I'm sure the, the city will reach out to you and you, on the, I think she mentioned even get you on the July agenda would be good.
We'll be glad to respond.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen. All right, next, we have continued discussion, this was something on our last regular meeting as an introduction, we're going to get a little bit more into the concept today with council members, Richard and Elder. Did you want to present, or how did you want to?
Yeah, I think what I'd like to do is give a little bit of background about this project, and I may come up to the podium, I'm not so sure. I like to be able to see everyone's face, and that doesn't give me the, the right perspective that we all need. So, what I'd like to say is, is that we, there have been some problems discovered with our current ordinance that, that classifies all roadways in the city of Lewis as streets. And we know that there are uniquenesses in some of the roadways within the city of Lewis. So, this process started about two years ago, that some residents were having some difficulties, and they started trying to get some relief for some of the issues related to driveway entrances. So, this has been a ground-up kind of movement, and we're at this point now where we want to present this to the public, so they really clearly understand what the problems are and what we think some of the solutions might be. I'd like to thank Councilman Richard for giving me help. Us, we worked together on this, it's been hours. We've got many citizens that have been involved in giving input, and Ashley and Blue for their help with putting this presentation together, they, they've really helped us out a lot. So, I'd like to start by reading a statement that kind of typifies really what Lewis is, and it's a gem, it really is a gem. It's a very unique community. And now, it's being surrounded by a lot of modern communities that aren't the old-town Lewis. So, when we write our codes, a lot of times, our codes try to encompass not only the new things, but the old things, and then when we redo the old things, it brings about changes that might not make the city as usable as it currently is. So, I want to read this. "Lewis is the first town in the first state, and it was founded in 1631." That's a long time. "It developed organically over centuries, creating what is now recognized to be the unique and charming community that contributes to what is the Lewis identity." unique and charming community that contributes to what is the Lewis identity." And you know, all of these new communities that they're marketing are based on our identity as a town, because people love Lewis. It's just such a wonderful quaint place. Old-town Lewis roadways and alleys, peculiar-shaped lots, and unique buildings tell a story that makes Lewis appealing. Developing a well-crafted ordinance which accommodates and perpetuates the architectural heritage, streetscape charm, and livability of Lewis requires code that reflects the town's growth. Development and the development and prosperity over time, which is respectful to the town's organic growth from a fishing village to a modern town that is not a beach town but a town with a beach, and that's to coin our mayor's term.
It's not mine.
Well, I don't know where it came from, but it really, it really is a good example of what Lewis is. So to move on, we developed a document, which I know you're not going to be able to see, and I don't want you to really be able to see it other than to recognize the fact that it's a draft. This is the second draft of what we were trying to accomplish with changes to ordinance. And we said ordinance, but actually, we're not creating a new ordinance. What we're doing is we're modifying current ordinance to be, to make what we consider to be alleys, alleys, all right, and not part of the street definition. So what I have here is a handout. Councilman, if you could pass these out. We put a second draft in place. I spoke to a first draft at one of our meetings, and just to be transparent, I want everyone to know that we've made a couple of minor changes.
Joe, is this for the benefit of the audience?
It's for whoever wants one and that's maybe more involved in this, and for council. So we'll move to the next, to the next slide. Treating all roadways as streets, this is the problem, these are the problems. Treating all roadways as streets and not recognizing the utilities that alleys provide, that's the problem with the current code. Requiring standard prescribed curb cuts appropriate for streets but inappropriate and not suitable for alley-like roadways. For example, when driveways are resurfaced, property owners must comply with a 12-foot or up to a maximum 20-foot wide curb cut requirement, including compliance with any city right-of-way. So there are right-of-ways also. So what happens is if you have a driveway already in place that has a 25-foot wide entrance and you go to repave it, now the entrance to your property has to be between 12 and 20-foot wide. That causes a lot of problems in certain areas of the city. Now I will say that the current, the current code works very well for streets, but when you get into certain areas of the city, they're alley-like, they're alleys, and it doesn't work. It doesn't work for those folks. And we'll give examples of that as we move along. Insisting that existing driveways at the time of the property is improved or redeveloped be brought into compliance with code that does not reflect the adjacent roadways' function or public use. So in other words, the roads that these driveways are entering on, in some cases, it's appropriate to have that width curb cut. But in other areas of the city, those roads are not used as major thoroughfares. So currently, the only recourse for property owners who pursue relief from codes is to appeal to the Board of Adjustment, and they would incur a $1,250 filing cost with no guarantee of a satisfactory solution. That's a lot of money with no guarantee. Many examples of code non-compliant driveways on alley-like roadways have been identified. We know where they are. What is considered to be non-compliant is actually the rule, not the exception. Those non-compliances have existed for decades and they've provided utility to both property owners and the community. So we have areas of the city that have been this way for decades. They've had unusual entrances to their properties. They're not all over the city. We were able to find out that they're only in certain isolated areas, and they look like alleys. And in our code, alleys are included with streets, so they all have to follow the same requirements. That's the problem. So let's go to the next slide. So the goal, our goal is to amend ordinances to recognize qualities particular to alley-like roadways that is currently met by including them in the definition of streets. So in other words, we want to classify alleys separately from streets in our code. Reclassifying city code to include the identified alleys without any change to signage or mailing addresses. We don't want to change the names of these areas, they would stay the same, but by classifying them as alleys, we could utilize them differently. Relieve both the city and the property owners from complying with street prescribed driveway width regulations, all right? In these alleyways, it's very important that they have more flexibility and that our code help them to make their properties usable to them, not take away the current utility, all right? And we'll give examples of that. So, and then to amend the ordinances to relieve property owners from both the burden of filing an appeal with the BOA. If we change this, there won't be a need for that. Now, the next slide. So what we've done is, we have identified by perusing the town and touring the town and studying it, that there are several roads, they're called streets now, that are alley-like. They're more like alleys. Bay Avenue, Bethel Alley, Bradley Lane, Chestnut Street, Midland Avenue, Orr Street, Roadline, St. Paul, Mall Alley and West, that's a loop that goes around, and West Mulberry, and Ship Carpenter Square. And we put the number of parcels, thank you Blue for doing that, he, she counted up all of the parcels related to each one of the streets, so we could see just how many people does this affect. It's a small amount, but if you live in one of those areas and you have to be burdened by this challenge to have to modify your driveway and then be restricted on your entrance after you've been using it with the wider entrance for decades, that's a real imposition. So we're trying to make our code more responsive to the community members, to the people that live and own property here. So the next slide. Oh, can you go back of second, Blue? Roadline. We have an asterisk there because even though it meets the qualities of an alley, it's really a major thoroughfare in the city. Why? Because we have the police leave the municipal building, they have to go out that way. That makes it a pretty major thoroughfare. People come in off of Gil's Neck to get to the municipal building, also to get to our two major thoroughfares that run through town. So that makes that kind of more like a major thoroughfare, so we don't think it should be there even though it meets the qualifications. So next slide. So what we've done is, we've taken a map, we have two maps that are going to be coming up. One is the canal side, and we showed where these areas are, and they're highlighted there. And we'll go to the next slide. The beach side, it affects two areas that we know of, Bay and Midland. So let's go to the next slide. We decided that if we want to be, figure out how to do this, and we tried a different way, we tried to figure out how to change code for all people in the city, and we found out that's not going to work, because really, when you look at what we have, when you tease these out and you look at what's left, the current code works. Most people have the correct-sized driveway entrances. Some snuck in there and got huge wide driveways that might be 30 feet wide, but they're existing now. And someday, they, if they repave or redo their surface, they're going to have to bring that entrance down, all right? That's just the way it is. We need parking for resident, for people to come into town. But these areas are not areas that people would commonly park in. These aren't areas that are going to help boost our economy or bring visitors and a lot of people into town. These are more designed for the utility of the people that live along these areas. So an alley, if we redefine alley, the word alley, alley right now, keep in mind, is tucked into the definition of street. So if we tease that out and revise, actually, we would have to revise several sections in the code. This is not just an ordinance, it's just a revision of certain sections of code, because we found that this spills out across probably three different areas within the code. So any of the following roadways, Bay, Bethel, Bradley, Chestnut Street, Mall Alley, Midland Avenue, Orr Street, Roadline, you know the list, if they have two or more of these characteristics, we would define them as an alley. First, it's a one-way roadway, all right? It does not provide access to public property, so it doesn't go to a park or to the end there, the beach, where you drive through to the end of the beach. It doesn't go to the library or to any of the major public areas. B, it's a secondary means of access to abutting property and/or is not intended for general traffic circulation. The roads that we're referring to here, the roadways we're referring to here, are not areas that are or should be traveled by the general public. They're alleys. They're meant to get just to these homes. And/or is not intended for, okay, has no legal parking on the roadway. If you look at Bay, you're not allowed to park along Bay. And most of these alleys, people do squeeze in along the side that live there because they have a lack of parking, but they're not bothering anyone, but you won't find cars coming in and parking there during a craft show or, you know, some major event in town. And they provide access to the rear of a lot or the side of a lot that is treated as the rear under setbacks for accessory buildings. Now that's a lot in there, but what it's basically saying is that if you go to Bay, for example, the front, front, back, whatever, one side of their house faces the ocean, you can't drive in that way and park. They only can get to their homes by going into these alleyways. If you look at Ship Carpenter, Ship Carpenter's houses all face the main, a main street on the outside, but on the inside, the little horseshoe that goes in there, that's an area that just accesses the backs of their houses. So they have to get into their houses, and that's the way they get in. And so they need a lot of room back there. And if you look at St. Paul, it's the same situation. You drive through, it's a little loop, and it's the backs of their properties. The public doesn't go back there as a general rule. Has rolled curbs, no curbs, and does not have sidewalks on either side of the roadway. Most of these alley-like roadways that we found have no sidewalks, no curbs, or they have a rolled curb, but they really don't have all the amenities that our streets have. They're alleys. Next slide. Okay, so what I did here was, what we're going to do is, we want to be very transparent about this whole process. We don't want to harm anybody by this. We're only trying to help people. So what we would like to do is have Blue take this whole presentation, put it on our projects pending on our website, so you at your leisure, and councilmen at your leisure, you can take this bike tour. And I'm going to say, I was riding around town with a camera, one hand.
You know they make mouths for you.
Yeah, I know. I know, but I couldn't, I wouldn't have been able to see what was going on. So it's crude, but it really does give a good idea of what these alleys look like. So let's take a look at them.
I would love to see him ride around.
It was funny. You should see, I'm going to have to show you one of my U-turns with a camera in hand, smooth as silk. All right. So let's look at St. Paul. Let's just play this video.
This is coming up off of Fourth Street, going westward on St. Paul.
See how narrow it is? Now that's their only parking. Now look at how wide this is. These are the backs of their properties. The public just very rarely goes back here.
It's a mixture of fronts.
Yes. We have a mixture in here. Do you want to just chime in?
No, you're doing fine. Go ahead.
Now, I want you to, I'll point this one out later. Look at, this house has two driveways. These alleys are very unique. They, they're organic, they've grown over time.
Camera.
Yeah. Look at that, look at how smooth that is. Okay, so, hey.
He's got licenses to realtors.
I'm pushing 70. Watch this curve down here. Watch this. If I wouldn't be in Lewis, I'd probably be a lot older. So the things that we do, so watch this. I'm going to come down here, I'm going to take a right-hand turn at this stop sign, and then I'm going to do a U, one-handed U-turn on my electric bike.
Academy Award work. Right. So now we're behind a BB nursing school, and he's headed westward again towards the back park.
You better turn up the sound, I might have set a few full of it.
That's coming back for you.
Did you see that U-turn?
Give the man a hand.
He needs a music man to drive.
It goes like this.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that's enough of this. Let's go to the next one. Okay, so Ship Carpenter is really unique, and I want to explain why. When you look at Ship Carpenter, their houses only have the back entrance, all right? And they are very wide driveways and they're very short. You will notice, some are a little longer, but they're short. You'll see some up here with the cars hanging out over the curb waves.
May I interrupt here for a second? Please jump in. What you need, what I'd like you to pay attention to is when you see street light poles, transformers, phone boxes, et cetera, that is suggesting where the outside, the edge, the outer edge of the right-of-way is. So what appears to be, this is non, that driveway should not have been approved at that width or width.
Can you stop right there?
Because...
Pause. Okay.
Is this the track where you wanted? I'm sorry?
Up, up a little bit.
Back that one.
Swing to the right. We'll use this one. Stop.
Right. And there's, okay, this is point, this illustrates where the transformer is, and typically, historically, the BPW has not gotten its own ripes-away, its own easements, I should say, not ripes-away, but its own easements. They ride the city's easements. this is an indication of how wide the city right-of-way is for Ship Carpenter Square. And according to our code, the driveway entrance for this, as an example, shouldn't have been constricted to 12 feet, I believe. And yet, we can see the, the need for, and the application of a much wider driveway.
And so what would happen is.
And so what would happen is, all, this distance from here back to about this line here should have been constricted to 12 foot, and then it could open up to this, you know, wider unrestricted width.
And then you'll see up here, and I'll stop it again to point this out, if we did that, they wouldn't be able to get into their driveways.
Right.
The, some of these are better than others, but some people have already repaved their driveways or put bricks in. Look at this. Stop. Okay. This, my goodness, they would have to go all the way back almost to the face of here and cut a chunk out. I mean, they, it would just, it would.
Well, what I would even suggest is that what you're looking at is very much the experience of people who reside on Bay Avenue on the beach side.
Yes.
And that is, most of those homes, a lot, I'll put it, a lot of those homes, they, their fronts are considered facing the water, their backs are on Bay, and they have driveway widths that go from one point to one point. Virtually, they fill up the whole width of the property. And so there's similar planning, if you want to call it, or similar land use here in this community as is found on Bay Avenue. So there's common, there's commonality.
Absolutely. So we'll go up just a little bit further, then we'll go to the next one and just look at a clip. Up here, you'll see quite a few. Now, these have already been redone, but you have folks that have gravel driveways now that are going to want to put bricks in.
Here's a light pole, shows you how far back, yeah.
Look at this one. Stop there. There, if they had to comply, they would have to take two chunks out and have one 12-foot wide entrance. How on earth would they get these cars in? They would just be driving over the city's gravel. It looks ugly. It's not really a good way to handle this situation. Okay, okay, let's go to another street. This is Bethel Alley. Again, it meets two of the criteria. Look at this. Look at these driveways. Stop. Okay, pause right here. My, my point here is, if this driveway had to be reduced, we don't even know what the, the easement is, and they have a 12-foot entrance, how would they ever get into their properties? Keep moving down this alley. So you can see, this is really problematic. And, and they're, all, all these streets that we've described have these characteristics.
And these are all available for people to watch at their leisure, right?
Yep, they are. So, so let's.
So Joe, on this though, I think we get the problem, and that, so do you want to move into what the.
I'm going to move into the next part.
Like the solutions?
So here are the solutions. Let's clip ahead. This will be on there for you to see. Examples, here are the examples that are created. We showed you what some of the problems are. Next, notches to main. Here is one that was just done according to current code. They put in a new driveway. For years, they had, this was their driveway, but they decided they wanted to upgrade and put in permeable block. They had to take two chunks out of their driveway, and they have to get two cars in. It, it won't work. They just drive across the area. But now they have an ugly mess in their backyard that they have to live with because our code is not working for people who live along alley-like roads. Next, Mall Alley. There's an example that parking is so limited along these areas. Next, Mulberry. Here, the Board of Adjustment closed up three garage doors here. They turned it into an apartment, and they end here. It's not enough room, so they're parking sideways, half on their property, half in the alley. These alleys are really unique. Next, there you go again. We're using the alleyway because we don't have enough parking on these alleys. They're really constricted. Next, look at that. Okay. That's Bay. There's one on Bay. So let's go to the next slide. So, here's the action plan. We would like to refer to council that they look at the alley code amendments that we're recommending.
The Planning Commission?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, to the Planning Commission. We'd like to give them this presentation as well, let them get, get our blessings from you folks. We'll explain all this to you at your meeting. And then we bring that back to, we bring it back to mayor and council for consideration of what LPP says, LPC says. And then we'd schedule a public hearing, and then we would have a vote on whether we can make this happen to relieve these areas that are kind of unusual in the city. So, are there any questions? Any statements, any from the audience? Yes?
Rich, come on up. First of all, Rich in 420 West Fourth on the Planning Commission for the great city of Lewis. First of all, thank you for the very thorough work that has gone into this. It is, it's, at first seems like a, you know, a little small problem. It's not. This is, this is, this is fairly major. So thank you for the work that I know you and Congressman, excuse, Councilman Rich had.
I like it.
I worked for Congress for a long time. Comes out naturally. Yeah. So I'm very gratified. I spoke earlier with Melanie Moser, who is our acting chair of the, of the Planning Commission, and we are gratified that you are going to refer this. We think this is appropriate, and, and we think that we'll be able to add some value and, and go along with the idea of public comment, of getting real good public input to this. It is a problem. You have done a lot, and so glad that you're going to be offering this presentation, because I think you've already done a lot of the groundwork. The other thing that I will, I can't speak for the, for the Planning Commission entirely, but I can commit that both Melanie and I are, excuse me, Commissioner Moser and I, will expedite the, the consideration of this. In fact, Melanie has suggested that we put it number one on the agenda for our July meeting. So, so thank you very much for the work that you've already done, and, and we look forward to, to, to a very elegant solution, which I think you've already laid the groundwork for. So thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
Any other comment?
Dennis, come on up. Well, Dennis has come, I also wanted to echo Richard, it's very impressive and thorough presentation, and helped understand and sort of illustrate the problem.
Yeah, and that's, that's the thing. Thank you. The, a lot of our code, a lot of code is sometimes written, and we don't know really how it affects things when it gets out there.
Dennis Riordan, 1302 Bay Avenue. Joe, Tim, and whoever else participated, I know these guys back here did as well. Great job, great presentation. And you know, I support this 100%. I mean, I live on Bay Avenue and recognize these issues. But you're right, it's not just this ordinance. There were a lot of ordinances in the city of Lewis were put in place years ago, and they really shouldn't be reviewed before they get enforced at this time, because there are a lot of them, some of them you've already said you're not going to enforce, recognizing that that case, that's the case. But it's, our, our code has a lot of that in there. Great job, Joe, and all of those that participated, and congratulations also. So, I, you know, just want our support, and I'm speaking for my neighbor Joe Ricky and I, so save a little bit of your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, I know, as Joe mentioned, it's like an old town, you get these things. I know Janelle remembers this from, the other issue with Ship Carpenter was what they called the through lot. What was the issue there? The through lots, we, we had to correct that, and there was, you know, you constantly find things that, you know, need to be kind of updated and remedied. So appreciate that, and I'm glad to hear that the LPC is interested, and we'll, we'll take a look at it. So, yeah, go on, make any other comments.
I know everybody wants to be on their way with their day. Julia Carey, Ship Carpenter Square, RHOA, also extends their gratitude to the two of you, because it's been going on for a long time, and you guys have brought it forward, and we have momentum, and that's fantastic. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
In Lewis, it's cool to live in that, in an alley.
Yeah. Or alley-like.
Exactly. All right. So the next item on the agenda is discussion, and this is another action item. I'm hoping we can take action on this one, is a recommendation from Parks and Rec regarding selection of a vendor for Canalfront Park replacement. And I don't know, Julia, do you want to, do you want to take us through how we got here on this?
Do you have the agenda item report? The letter from, you can read it.
Do you want that? Do you need it?
If you can just pull that up, that just.
Perfect. Okay. Good. Okay. So this, just to remind the, the public, the Parks and Rec's been looking at this for a while, and last meeting, they made a recommendation. Julia will kind of let us know what that recommendation is.
Yes, at the last meeting with Parks and Rec, they unanimously decided they would like to go with the Compan design. Three designs were discussed and were presented to Parks and Rec, and that's what they have decided.
It was unanimous?
Unanimous, yep.
All right. Does anyone from the day has have questions for?
We do have Representative Scott is here from Compan, so if you have any questions you'd like to direct to him, he's here as well.
Wonderful, thank you. I do have one or several questions, and possibly the representatives would be best to answer these questions. Appreciate you coming today.
Absolutely. Morning.
Thank you very much, yes. During the Parks and Rec meeting, it was suggested that there would be a, the use of asphalt to create a subsurface for what will become the play area, and.
So I did watch that meeting, and I'm not sure where asphalt came up. Generally.
It came up from that park commissioner.
Right, you're right.
Yeah, and he, of course, has experience working in the state.
Rodney, yes.
And he's suggested that he's worked with these kinds of parks before.
Generally, there would be a, a subbase of four inches minimum of compacted stone, not asphalt.
Okay, so is, does that compacted stone affect the porousness?
Sure. So the rubber itself is permeable.
Okay.
And then the stone subbase obviously would be permeable. But one of the things I suggested to Julia was, if, if you're concerned about flooding, it may make sense to have the town engineer draw up a drainage plan, which we can institute in our construction phase, you know, just like four-inch corrugated pipe around the perimeter of the playground to act as, let's call it a French drain.
Right.
Which would outlet somewhere on the property. My guess is because of its proximity to the canal, it already probably has a high-water table. But what you're probably seeing, again, I haven't witnessed it, you would know better than I would, but you're probably, there's probably not a stone base currently there. So what you're seeing is a bunch of compacted mulch on top of mulch and fresh mulch that's just ponding with no place for the water to really outlet.
Right. And so that drainage plan that you're suggesting that be engineered, would that be accomplished by your company? You would actually do the construction of that?
Yeah, so our installers would, would be able to implement the, the drainage plan per.
And will that affect the estimate that you had?
No, I think we could do it.
Okay. Thank you. I have another question.
Can I just comment for a second? Do you mind if I comment on your question? Are you okay, Tim? Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, and I was very glad to hear the gentleman say, rather than asphalt, compacted stone is a better material. It's less expensive, it's easier to put in, and it will be better related to flooding. But I like his recommendation greatly, that we have a very clear, you know, pipe corrugated is fine, so that we address that from the very beginning, and we don't have to go back in and address it. So I just want to reiterate that I'm very glad with what you're saying, and Tim, thanks for that question, because I think that's critically important, and that our engineers look at this plan and just make sure we have proper drainage from the beginning. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. Yes, another question that I have is, perhaps, stay, stay where you are, this might be a question for the staff. Do I understand, or has it been suggested that the demolition of the existing children's playground will be done by in-house, by our people? Or is this something that company?
Compan.
I'm sorry.
Compan.
Compan, I'm sorry. I saw, I thought I saw an I at the end.
We are a Danish company. You can, you know, pronounce it anyway.
Okay. Anyway, who's responsible for that, please?
So I have spoken with the maintenance department to try and defray some of the costs, and they have indicated that they can remove the materials and transport them to, you know, off-site, and they, they can do that.
And that has been conveyed? You're agreeable to this?
Yeah, I mean, I'm pretty sure, and I'm pretty confident, that our, we had demo in our number.
Right.
So we're going to.
Tweak.
Yeah, tweak the scope, we'll tweak the cost associated with that. Absolutely.
Thank you. The other thing I noticed is that, in the warranty section.
I've seen what you have highlighted too. I'm glad you highlighted.
You've got good eyes. Yeah. I noticed that, that there is a near-water installation.
Yes.
Right. And where are we in that? Because this is near-water.
It's mostly shoreline and not canal, so I spoke to our head of our ESA team yesterday, because I knew that was going to come up.
Did you?
Yes. Because I, I personally want to set the most realistic expectations.
Right.
And I knew that that was going to come into question. I asked him where that stood, and he said it wouldn't apply to this project, because two, it's twofold. One, it's basically more like adjacent to the ocean, not the canal. Now, I know there's going to be some saltwater coming from the canal.
Right.
But the majority of the playground is organic natural Robinia wood, which wouldn't corrode from saltwater.
And, but what about the metal components?
So the metal components, I, I will have him write a letter that states you will get the full warranty, not the half warranty because of the water.
Okay.
He spoke to me at great length.
Okay. And so the measurement, the 650 feet from the shore will be.
Correct.
Taken out and.
So one of the things I probably should have led with, I work directly for the manufacturer. Everyone else in the playground world is sort of a mom-and-pop agency that buys equipment from a manufacturer and resells it. So we're the largest playground manufacturer in the world. We're not going anywhere, and the biggest thing that I stand by in, in my job is post-sales support, right? Serving your community for the life of the playground.
Right.
So when it comes to the warranty, you'll notice that the structure itself doesn't have said warranty. It's the components of the structure.
Yeah.
So, and typically, you can factor that whatever the warranty states, like for example, the wood has a 10-year warranty.
Right.
You double the warranty, and that's the expected life cycle or lifespan of the playground piece. Now, there's going to be times, you know, I, I deal with major cities up and down, Delaware and Philadelphia, there's certain times where there's expected maintenance, because you have hundreds of kids playing on a normal wear and tear, and you have vandalism. So each sort of warranty case sort of gets reviewed to make sure that we're standing by the warranty, right? Like, there are certain times where it might be beyond the warranty period, but we'll still cover it. It's all situational.
Sure.
But like, you know, you can clearly differentiate what's normal wear and tear versus vandalism.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that actually is a perfect segue to my, possibly my last question, although I reserve the right to have a follow-up.
Oh, you can have as many questions as you like.
And that has to do with, do you, does your company offer a maintenance service agreement?
Yes.
And if so, I don't think I saw it in here, did I?
So Blue wants to pull up. I created sort of two slide presentations, one of like what to expect with Robinia and kind of walk you through it. So Robinia is just a fancy species term for black locust. It's the second densest wood in the world. You know, boat decks are made of it because of its natural acidity. Insects really aren't attracted to it. You know, boat decks are made of it because of its natural acidity, insects really aren't attracted to it, especially carpenter bees. But because of its natural moisture content, over the first, let's call it 18 to 24 months, it dries out and checking does occur. Now, we have a complimentary program, depending on dollar amount spent, $50,000 in equipment and under, you get a one-year maintenance agreement. Anything over $50,000, you get two years. So basically, as you click through this, you'll see, you can keep going, you'll see some photos.
They're definitely in the two-year window.
Yes, absolutely. So like this, these little fractures that you see are natural. They're, they're not compromising any structural integrity. But once in a while, you do see fractures that are a little bit bigger than 5/8 of an inch.
Right.
We come out, we route it, we fill it with shims, carpenter glue, sand it, and you could tell that there was a cosmetic fix. But naturally, because it's a natural element, over time, that fix will dissipate and you won't even be able to tell that something occurred. The other thing that to discuss too is that we offer two types, and this is something to think about with ongoing maintenance. We have the natural untreated version, which over time will weather and it will patina like most of the cedar shingles in the community. And you could just lightly power wash it to remove that stain. The other option would be a pre-stained version, which would require more upkeep because you'd have to continually stain it.
Right.
Now, the pirate ship that you are getting will be a combination of natural, untreated, and then certain elements of the structure are painted. So there will be some ongoing painting maintenance, you know, every couple of years.
Is that a service that your company provides? Have you been asked to provide?
So... Yes, and one of the reasons, there's another project that we're working on, we actually just finished install, I want to show you some photos of it, in Laurel, where it will be ongoing paint, just because of the natural elements of what they picked. So yes, we can provide it for the first two years, yes.
Would we... No, wait a minute, stop right there, please, excuse me. So under the first two years, it is provided, not it may be provided, is that correct?
Yes. Because paint, paint is something that we don't, it would be like you building a house and you bought the house. The gentleman who bought, sold you the house isn't going to come back in three years and paint it because the paint faded.
No, but during that first warranty period.
Correct, yes. But paint, paint would probably, like fading of paint would not fall under a warranty, that's just normal maintenance. But we can provide it as a separate line item, like an ongoing maintenance package.
Right.
I don't believe that anyone in the playground world, in our, in our world, has a maintenance program. It's something that we've been talking about developing, but it's not something that we have today.
Maybe you may approach this another way.
Sure.
Does your, the construction, the materials used, the construction, the engineering, the design of your equipment, does it require a certain skill level from that to take care of it that would possibly exceed?
Normal public works.
Are we looking at, I'm sorry, do we, are we looking at a training program for our maintenance people to be able to maintain this equipment?
No, no. I mean, first line of defense, typically when there's a repair, I come out and assess it, I take photos, I order parts, and they either get shipped to me, my project manager, or one of our installers. And if it's covered under warranty, we come out and fix it at no cost.
Right.
Now, there are times where, let's just say, the fix is beyond my level of expertise that needs a real installer. We would contract an installer to do it, and if it falls under warranty, we would absorb the cost. Now, are there certain things that your public works staff might want to be made aware of? Absolutely. I'm not sure if you guys have a certified playground safety inspector on staff, one of your public works guys, that would know to periodically check certain things to make sure that there are no, you know, loose bolts or, you know, head entrapments or probes, like these are things that a normal park and rec department check every so often to make sure, maintain that you're in compliance, but also, you know, if the town's insurance company needs certification. So I'm a CPSI, I'm a certified playground safety inspector, but in seven years, I've never audited my own playground or someone else's playground because quite frankly, I think that's a conflict of interest. So I would recommend a third-party person do that. In terms of, you know, if your insurance company reached out and said, "We need an audit," I would recommend so. In terms of this, I mean, I've sold playgrounds up and down Delaware and Pennsylvania with Robinia and I have minimal service issues with it. We did one in Centerville, right across from Buckley's, if you're familiar with Newcastle. It's been in the ground four, four years and no one once has called me for any staining or maintenance issues. But the one in Laurel, I'll probably get a phone call once a week.
And what is it about the Laurel installation?
I'll show you the photos. Keep, it might, all right, so here, here's an example of your proposed structure. You'll, you'll notice that there are certain parts of it that have color to it. Flip to the next one, this is more indicative, you'll notice that the polster natural and then the facade is painted a gray.
Where do the woodpeckers live?
I don't think they're going to live here. So the next slide is an installation in France. This is a real story, you can just hit play really quick, but it's important to understand.
Along the River Monde in the winter of 2018, kids needed a wet suit to play on the new Compan Robinia Playground in the southeastern part of Paris. The river ran over its banks and there was water everywhere. Water, water, water. Conditions like that can destroy normal wood, but fortunately, the Robinia wood is extreme. Robinia is very hard and resistant to rot. Only a half year later, and you can hardly see where the floodwater was on the playground equipment during the winter. The playground was built in 2017 as a second play area along the river because of the popularity amongst the residents of the area. It offers tremendous play value for different age groups perfectly framed in natural surroundings. And no matter if the flood returns, the playground will be there for many years.
So, and then the next slide, the next video is really impactful, but I think there's a, there's an attachment to wood playgrounds, right? So if, like if you go to Kent County and you go to Piccadilly Castle, that was community-built and people don't want to change it. Unfortunately, the playgrounds of the 90s were used with the wrong wood. The right wood, we know what the right wood is today and it's black locust. But this is the same structure, this was installed, this is the county park and rec person.
Amazing. This site is on Englewood Beach, which is just north of Ground Zero for Hurricane Ian. This playground was just installed and in Englewood, we were in the eye wall of a category four hurricane for over seven hours with sustained hurricane-force winds. And this Robinia ship is still standing and doesn't appear to even have lost a piece except for the flags on the mast. You can see that the shade structure was blown down, that was existing. You can see the trees down, garbage cans piled up, all of the fencing around was down and lots of debris. But the ship is still standing.
I have a question.
So, Compan...
The Robinia wood.
Yep.
Okay, you mentioned about the ship.
Mm-hmm.
What percentage of the ship is Robinia wood?
Uh, I would say 100%.
It is 100.
Except for any, you know, stainless steel or galvanized hardware to make.
Okay, I thought maybe there was a little bit of a mixture of some of the other ones.
Everything in your entire design is Robinia except for one piece, which is the inclusive carousel, where children who may have mobility impairments or in a wheelchair can wheel right on, and the shade structure.
My, my other question is, when the Robinia wood, does it go down into the ground to anchor? What anchors?
Oh, concrete.
Okay, so does, do the Robinia poles go into the concrete?
Yes.
Okay, and that's not problematic?
No, I mean, Robinia can, is, the advantage of it is it can sit submerged in water for hundreds of years.
Okay.
I mean, literally, most boat docks and boat slips are made of Robinia black locust.
And the reason I ask that question is, we know that the weakness of fences, the posts, is what's in the ground.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That always, and so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, well, I think fence posts too aren't as deep as these, as these footers. So yeah, to answer your question, it would sit in the ground. Now, this, this is the playground at Laurel, and the reason why I'm saying, it took us a few years. If you're from, if you guys are, if you know Ed Lewandowski from the University of Delaware, he chairs the Coastal Communities.
Yeah.
I worked with him for three years, and Jules Brock, who left the university to go to University of Florida, we designed this entire playground based off the Nanitoke Indian folklore. So you have squirrels, there's a giant rainbow crow, it sits right across Pizza King on 13. But if you flip through it, every single one of these pieces is hand-painted. So there's acorns, there's a squirrel council, we literally, I mean, these pictures were from yesterday. Rainbow crow, I mean...
And your company's doing the painting?
It came painted, but I sold them a maintenance agreement where we will be responsible for the paint. And, I mean, this, that's, there's not another rainbow crow on the planet.
Right. It's interesting because here, speaking to what Mr. Elder was speaking to about the, it looks like your posts are all metal here and not wood.
So though, this was a unique application because of where Broadwater Creek is, we identified that the water table was high and we had to do a surface mount installation. You'll notice that all of this is poured on a slab versus in-ground.
I did notice that.
Yeah, so, um, not only are they custom, but I would say, unless I'm in a blacktop playground in the city of Philadelphia, I'd say 99% of my installs are in-ground versus surface mount.
Do you know anything about the water table, where this is going to be constructed?
I don't have specific information on that at this point.
And you might want to look into that. And the other thing, of course, is the fact that, it's my understanding that some parts of that park are encapsulated brownfield.
I do remember hearing.
And if he is pouring foundations, that could be hurtful to that. Do you know anything about that?
I mean, I would say 80% of North Jersey's encapsulated.
Well, that's for other reasons.
Wow, yeah. It's common.
You said it all, you're an expert.
There's a lot of superfund sites in, you know, and do certain permits need to be obtained? Maybe. It's not something I've ever encountered, but, you know, my team has experience with it.
And to go along with that, the groundwater, we do have high, a high water table here. So these posts are going to get, definitely get water at the base. Some of the things, some of the technology that's being used in the industry now is a product called Perma Column, where they're putting a concrete column in that has a bracket and they bolt to the wood. And then that prevents the bottom of the post from ever rotting off.
Yeah.
I don't know if you use a product like that or not.
I mean, we do have a steel footing option for all the equipment. I think, I'd have to check from our technical team. I'm not sure if the boat can offer it, but most of this stuff's going to be sitting in sonotube anyway. Yeah. And then I had a couple more slides to help you folks understand how the rubber is installed. Because a lot of people think it's just a, it's a very manual process. So I think if you slide, this is just another cap on the warranty. And then this was warranty from the shade company in case you needed it. So here's a playground we did in Delaware County, Roastree Park. Stone subbase, the equipment's set, it's all installed. So basically, a crew arrives on-site and it's a, it's a two-step process. So the first step, if you flip to the next slide, so the rubber thickness, the system, the thickness of the system is all predicated based on the critical fall height of the equipment. So let's just say hypothetically, you had a seven-foot, two-inch critical fall height, we round up to eight feet, we go to the next level. We know injuries will occur on playgrounds, but the most important thing that we're looking for in our industry is the lack of critical, like catastrophic head injuries from falls. So if you have an eight-foot fall height, you might require a 4.25-inch playground thickness. Now, because a playground might have different fall heights in different areas, we sort of don't want to jack the price up to the customer and say, "Well, we need a four-inch system throughout the entire playground," where let's say the two-to-five-year-old section might need a two-inch system. So they make up the difference with stone, because stone's cheaper than rubber. The finished grade of the stone will be the same height. So basically, what they do is they take the black buffings and they hand-mix them with a concrete mixer and a binding agent.
On-site, they're doing this?
Yes, they put it in a wheelbarrow and they hand-trial every, the entire system. They could do about 2,000 square feet a day. Once the system cures, you can flip to the next slide, that's when they bring in the color. You'll notice the entire area is black. Only the top half inch of your system will be color.
Have we picked a color?
Color, I think the colors are TBD, so there's two types of colors, right? You have, if you flip to the next slide, you'll be able to see.
You don't need to talk about the colors.
Yeah, yeah, but I think it's important to understand and set expectations. So that dark brown is considered a 50/50 mix. It's 50%...
That's this.
Yes, it's 50% virgin material and then 50% black. It's speckled. From far away, it looks like a 100% color. It's 50/50, it keeps the cost down.
So is the black not virgin material?
It's, it's recycled material.
Okay.
And that's everybody in the industry.
Okay.
Yeah. You'll notice the color accents are 100% color. Cost is going to be a little bit more. So I think in your quote, I may have recommended 50/50 tan, tan brown, like black mix, and then the blue, which would embody the ocean for the boat, was 100% color. And then, yeah, so they hand-trial that as well. And then you'll see the next slide's the entire finished. It's a very dirty job, it's not something I would want to do.
I've had some experience with these rubber surfaces. So my question is twofold. One, the experience I had was, this was put in during a time when the weather was not good. And it did not cure properly. We had children come up and vandalize the playground after it was only being used for a few weeks and ripped.
Wow.
Literally ripped this stuff off of the stone base. And, and it was, it was a mess.
Yeah.
And so, so they came back and they redid the whole thing. We still always had a difficult time because this stuff can be kind of soft and can be vandalized. So I wonder, I, I've been over to the elementary school and there are some places there where some of this surface is having some, some issues.
Needs rubberized?
Yeah, needs, needs a little bit of TLC, it's got to be maintained. You can't just expect that it's going to sit there for 10 years and not have issues.
Yeah, it's a great point.
How would that be handled?
So we, the, the rubber crew is a sub of ours, they, they offer a five-year warranty. I had a, I had a project in Delaware County, so you bring up a really great point. A lot of people think it's maintenance-free, and it's not because of our climate and the weather changing, it expands and it contracts. So, um, the weather is imperative. Any, it needs to be a constant temperature north of 50 degrees even at night for it to cure properly. We would have a security team after the install crew leaves for the night that sits and monitors the park to make sure no one gets in there. I've had situations where kids have, literally footprints, I had a playground in North Philly where the kids lit it on fire. Yeah, I mean, it, it happens. But then you, you could do a, you could actually put a rubber playground in a rural area and a squirrel runs across.
Like a deer.
Yeah, a deer, like anything can happen.
Right.
But we did have a situation up and down the East Coast, not, not directly affiliated with Compan, but the rubber company where eight or nine playgrounds in February, the system failed.
Yep.
Because of a bad batch of binder. Now, if you remember, in March of 2020, certain chemicals were impossible to get and everyone said it was COVID. It wasn't COVID. It froze in Texas and Dow Chemical's largest plant looked like a Siberian, like James Bond setting. Like all of these pipes burst, so they couldn't produce anything that was an ethylene or binding agent. So they narrowed it down to these rubber systems failing back to a certain batch of binder. But what was interesting though, if you flash forward six weeks, it shrunk. And everything with that rubber system that looked like it was problematic fixed itself. But I didn't tell the rubber company that and they came out and replaced the rubber, $300,000, they ate the cost. Because the client deserves that and that's what I'm going to stand for. So there are issues. So there are issues, enough, I mean, the, the only challenge, you'll notice that like certain areas in this design, especially the swings, if you back up a slide, you might notice it. It's like high-traffic areas, like that orange circle where the ramp is.
Right.
I've always put high-traffic areas with predefined designs so that the high-traffic areas, when they need to be a patch, it doesn't look like it was a mistake patch, like it was, we'll cut the whole circle out.
Right.
Like the slide exit, I would recommend that. So, yeah, I mean.
So you've addressed that in your proposal of the design, right?
Yeah, like, and if we need to relook at the design and change the design of the PIP to make you guys feel more comfortable, so be it. I mean, it's not something that should hold us up.
Right. So, so, um, can you hook us up so that if in the future we have problems after five years, that we have access to the company that can come out and repair this for us and really take us seriously and not be busy putting in new playgrounds that would be able to service us?
Yeah, I mean, if we're selling the system to you.
Right.
I think your line of defense would be to come to me.
Okay.
And then let me delegate with the rubber folks. The rubber folks are some of the best, like, I only use two crews. I use one out of Texas that's a, like, traveling crew. And then the other one I use is based out of Baltimore.
Yeah.
Metro DC area.
Yeah. I have. And that was part of the problem we had.
Right.
We, these very inaccessible companies to us.
Yeah, I mean, part of the advantage of working with Compan is, like I said, I am, I work for the manufacturer. We are the biggest playground agency in the United States. We're giving these rubber crews more revenue than like a mom-and-pop agency, they're going to be more responsive to us.
Right. I have one last question, may I?
Sure.
Real quickly, and this is not directed to you, but directed to our staff, and that is, I noticed that in the installation conditions section, the requirement falls on the city to provide security for the staging area. And are we, do you have a clear understanding of how much space is going to be needed for a staging area, for the materials, equipment that's brought in, and how it's going to be secured during the, during that construction?
I think Scott can probably answer how much material. I think when we had the tennis courts done, we had materials stored there at the parking lot outside the tennis courts and the, or I'll say when we did the decking at Canal Front Park, and we asked the PD to be doing some frequent drive-bys and eyes-on so that there were not issues there. And both of those projects, there was no vandalism during the installation or theft of materials.
Right. And I know for the decking project, that was mostly completed prior to our season.
Correct.
Right. Do you have a, have, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
Scott.
Scott. Do you have a clear understanding of how large an area he's going to need for staging so that that can be?
I think Scott has to answer that.
So if you look at the plan, and if you, if you want to scroll back to the boat.
And how many days, what's our construction?
I would think, my guess would be perfect weather, two weeks to construct the playground, and maybe like another week to do the rubber. So if you look at this boat, the two sections to the left and the right are going to come pre-built. On pallets. My guess is they're going to core the holes and they're going to take a lull and they're going to just drop those two sections right into place. Everything else will have to be assembled, and I'd imagine it's probably six or seven pallets of equipment, monister skid loader. I don't think, I always, for projects like this, aside from the boat, send the equipment to the installer. It goes to his yard and he mobilizes it and brings it with him as he needs it.
Got it.
Versus having everything just dropped right into the lot at Canal Front Park.
Wonderful.
We would put up orange contemporary construction fence, the majority of the job is going to be done with the skid loader, you know, not major construction equipment. You know, obviously, a concrete truck will come when it's time to pour concrete, and if there's an inspector from the city that wants to inspect, the concrete pour, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's going to take up a lot of space.
Okay.
But I can get dimensions from our logistics company ahead of time to figure out, so it's not a disturbance.
Right. And that doesn't need to come to involve us, but it is something that staff should be keyed in on. Thank you very much, Scott, appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Anyone from the audience? Amy, are you with us?
I am, I am.
All right, so I had a question. So you need us to just basically agree, you know, vote to agree that go with the Parks and Recs recommendation, and should we also include the additional engineering from Charlie to look at the drainage engineering as part of our motion?
Yes.
Okay.
You could also include the potential condition that was raised, the near-water installation, just removing that exclusion from the proposal.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion, Tim? Actually, we need to include the fact that we're going with the Parks and Recs recommendation. We're going to include instructions to staff to work with Charlie to, and GMB to get a drainage plan.
Right.
And then the warrant, just calling out the warranty?
Right. Thank you very much, yes. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation from the Parks and Rec Commission to award this contract to Compan. And with, with two, we're going to call these conditions, I think, is that correct? All right. And one of them is that the recommendation from the Compan representative is that a drainage plan be created and it would be implemented, included in this plan, in the construction?
So I think what Scott was recommending is that we have engineered drawings and then the, the company can.
Yes.
Work on that.
Exactly. GMB would create the drainage plan, and then in turn, that plan would be handed to the company.
Correct.
And they would in fact do the, they would do the installation, right?
Correct.
Okay. And, and then there is the issue of the warranty with respect to the location of the playground to the water, the canal, and as we discussed in this meeting.
Okay.
That's my motion.
All right. Can we get a second on that?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing it.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank the Parks and Rec Committee, too, that spent, you know, a good amount of time looking at this and appreciate their work. All right, so that brings us to D2, which is discussion regarding proposing members of cities municipal code to allow home-based dog grooming business. Here, come up, young lady. This came from last, at our last regular meeting, at the end of public comment, the request came. So today, I think you're just going to provide us a little bit more essentially details around what you're proposing?
Right. So, hi, this is Sarah from 405 Savannah Road. So essentially, what I was trying to do was to create a home business, home dog grooming business, which is now becoming our large growing business for, throughout the whole United States, because everybody has at least one dog, one cat, or more. And what we found that within Lewis that we had, I believe there was approximately just within the city limits, like within here is about over 700 dogs. And there's not very many reputable dog grooming places in the area. And so I just wanted to see, wanted to get my home dog grooming business, because we did just purchase a home in Lewis, and we are under the, we are under the mixed-use property that we're allowed to have a business, a home business, and so, but the dog grooming business is not on the approved list, but it's not also on the unapproved as a home business. And so what we're trying to do is trying to get this dog grooming business as, on the approved list so that we can get a business license and continue with, with, you know, opening up my business. So if you had any questions, I did detail about how we were trying to be very hyper-local, hyper-local, because since, within a one-mile radius of where I am, there's at least four dog parks, as well as the, to reduce the noise and everything, we are doing a one-to-one business. We are not going to be like Petco or PetSmart where everybody can just come in, walk in at any time, everybody will have their designated time slots. And since most of the dogs will be in the area, there is not going to be a high traffic, there's not going to be, you know, a lot of dogs, a lot of cars coming in and things like that. We are also in the process of, when the grooming salon itself, since we are in a four, we are in the four townhouse, it's like the four row houses right in front of Savannah Animal Hospital. We are very close to our neighbors, we're not, you know, there's not, you know, a little space. We are putting rock wool in our ceilings and in our, in the, and in the walls to help reduce noise level, because there are certain breeds that do have a higher vocal, talkative talent whenever they get groomed and stuff like that. I've been in the business for 16 years, so I do also know that reducing of noise, we are also using the use of dog pheromones to help keep dogs calm in a natural, in a natural way. Also, because we are doing one client to one client, obviously, there aren't going to be any other dogs that are going to interact with the dogs to create any chaos or anything like that. We are not kenneling any of the dogs, which is again, a not, is on the unapproved list, we are not kenneling any dogs. This is literally cage-free, one-on-one attention, so it's like a concierge for your dogs, it's a dog service.
But does the owner, do you anticipate the owner kind of hangs out at your house while you're doing or coming? Like, how does that?
Drop off. So there is a space that we, that we created in, because ours is the only one with a walk down. We did create a space where we can have a dog and the owner come in, because they can't technically be in our house because of the height restriction, that's why we can't be a full-blown, you know, like a, like a, what is it, a, like an actual, if we have like a whole building type of thing?
Like a retail establishment?
Yeah, like retail stuff. We do have, I think it was like six and a half feet, and we're supposed to be seven feet. So anybody who comes into our home has to, in the business, has to live in the home and, or has to be a family member, according to the regulations. So we all.
So you literally have to drop the dog off.
Yep.
Outside.
So, yeah. So, no, so we do have, when you walk down, we do have, we created a, like a seating area. So what we do is, and then we're going to actually add a gate to it, but you can't see it on the street, because according to, we are Lewis historic home, you can't change the facade of the home when, when you're looking at it from a street view. So what we'll do is have a gate, and then that's where we'll do the transfer of the pup, and then I will take the dog into the home, into my, into the basement unit, into the grooming salon. And, and then the client can go, you know, have a cup of coffee, go around, because it usually takes about an hour to two hours, depending on the size of a dog, to do my services, and then they'll come back and pick up the dog, and then we'll do the trade-off, again, outside of the home, but, you know, in a secure location, so dogs can't run into Savannah Road or anything like that. And, yeah.
So can you explain that, that height issue to me?
Oh, so, we read, my husband and I, we read somewhere that in order to be, in order to have like a business, like a home business where you can have other people who don't live in your family or live inside the home, it has to be seven feet. It had to be like a seven-feet-high ceiling to the floor. I think it was just, because I think it's a code thing, I can't remember where exactly we found it, but I can find it for you. But because we are at six and a half feet, pretty much it's just me only going to be in the business anyways.
So your basement is only six and a half feet.
Correct.
But upstairs, you probably have eight foot to 10 foot.
They're eight and nine feet, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay. So it's just the basement part as well?
Correct, yeah.
I see.
And it's actually only two-thirds.
I had two questions about that. I'm sorry, Joe, are you finished with your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so my question, I just wanted a clarification. When a customer would come, are they're not entering your home where you reside, they're not entering a front door, are they coming in a different entrance? That's my first question. And I got one more.
Okay, so with that question, there, we are the only row house that has a separate walkout basement, and it has steps to come down. And within there, we did create that little, kind of like, it looks like a patio outside, but it's underneath our decking.
And that's. So that, in other words, the customer is not, your neighbors, that's my question.
Right, yeah.
Your neighbors who are townhouses, they come in and out of their front doors, are they going to interact with the dogs as they come in?
No.
Or you're saying they come through a separate basement?
They come through a separate basement door, yes.
Okay, okay. And then I, and you're, and I'm so glad you've done the research about what is allowed and what's not allowed. Good for you as a home business owner to look at that as you're looking at purchasing property. Kenneling, as you said, is not allowed in our zoning definitions of uses. Not every dog owner picks up their dog on time, like not every parent picks up their kids on time at school, okay? It happens. So how are you going to handle so that you don't become, not by your choice, but by your clients, a mini kennel if someone is very delayed? And then you've got neighbors saying their dog's in the back and it's barking, you know, all that kind of thing. How will you address that?
So I do have fees that whenever they sign up and they make a request, an appointment, there is a, they do sign up with a credit card and there is a fee where if they drop off early or drop off later, that there is a fee after, I think it was like a half an hour after I called them, there's a fee that gets attached. And if they become a regular recurrence, and I do have a half an hour slot between each of my clients that I've, I've created so that, you know, you know, if I have like a one-hour dog, it's literally a one-and-a-half-hour time slot that I've created. So there is that extra timeframe so that if a dog owner does happen to be late, I do have that allotted space. But there are fees, and a lot of people don't like paying the extra fees, so obviously, if they become a regular occurrence, I do have on the contract saying that I can deny, I can not, I can say, terminate the, the client relationship with them and say, sorry, I can't have you as a client anymore.
Okay, I'm sorry, I did have one more follow-up, I apologize, I thought I only had two. The third one is, and some citizens have reached out to council, worried about disease and fleas and all those kinds of things, because your business itself, you're addressing the sound, it sounds like, by doing some extra insulation. But what, and because you've been in this industry for so long, how could you reassure the public that should this condition be waived for you, that in fact, your neighbors who have adjoining walls are not now going to increase their risk related to any kind of animal-borne disease?
So every, between every client, I do have, there are disinfectants that are natural and not natural and kind of more stronger. I will be using the stronger disinfectants, which actually goes against parvo and a lot of the major diseases, parvo and stuff like that. All my clients that do come in will have, they have to have submitted a, like, all of their vaccination records from their vets, wherever their vets are, as well as all, in between every client, I will also be disinfecting my tools and my grooming things, anything that I use on a dog, so it's not going to be spreading any of the diseases. If there are flea, any flea infestations, of course, that's not like what a vet can do or anything like that. I will have a flea, I do have a flea shampoo and everything like that, and then again, that's an added fee. And of course, I will check every dog, which is what they'll do outside, I'll be checking all the dogs from head to tail about everything from, if there's any like, like blumps, bumps and stuff like that, or anything that would create any kind of hysteria, I guess, with, among the dog community.
Thank you, that's a very thorough response. That's the end of my questions, thanks.
If I understand correctly, that you and your, I believe it's your husband, correct?
Right.
You live upstairs, is that correct?
Well, not yet, we're actually getting, hopefully by the end of, by tomorrow or the early of next week, we'll have a certificate of occupancy, because we're still, we're literally cut, like, cutting it close, we just had everything done, I think, today.
So, and that work is remodeling the whole house or just?
Correct. It was the whole entire house.
I see. And the, thank you. And the entrance that you described to provide this service is, would be coming off the city sidewalk down?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
It's not an entrance in, from the backyard?
No. It's from the city sidewalk.
Okay. And that is, you actually have steps that come down?
Yes, we're the only row house with steps.
And it's off of the Savannah sidewalk or the?
Savannah sidewalk, yeah.
Right. Yeah, I know which house is yours now, because I often thought that was possibly an old garage Right. Yeah, I know which house is yours now, because I often thought that was possibly an old garage that was down there.
Somebody told us it was an old carriage house where they would store carts and stuff. And we're like, oh, I don't know.
Oh, okay, yeah. Have you talked to the neighbors about what you want to do?
So we have three neighbors, one, the neighbor that's directly to, if you're looking at the house, directly to the left of us. They are Pennsylvania neighbors that this is their summer home. And they also have a dog and they're like, if we open, they'll have, be a client of mine. The neighbor all the way to the corner, she's actually a veterinarian. She actually travels back and forth from her veterinary practice and here. And she's very pro, pro, pro dog grooming, cause obviously, you know, she has dogs, two dogs. And she's like, oh, I want you to open up. The neighbor to our right, we haven't seen him since we've bought the house. So I don't know what his take on it, but the neighbor around the corner who owns two golden retrievers, he is, I believe, on the historical society, he's like, I need you to open. So a lot of the neighbors and a lot of the, a lot of the people in our, that I've talked to, I have, I'm a member of the American Legion and a lot of them are, you know, they live in the Lewis area as well and they're very pro about it. And then I've been living, I've been living here since October, but been coming here since I was two years old cause my mother has the house two doors down from us. And so yeah, so I'm pretty much know a lot of the locals who, they're like, oh, I can't wait till you open up your business. And I'm like, we have some pit butts, but we're getting there.
What would your hours be?
So I do have, there's the noise ordinance from seven to nine. I am going to be open up from seven to five. Seven AM are usually for the clients that are on the older side or like the, like the senior citizen dogs that, you know, literally they can't like wait during the day or, you know, they have sleeping hours and stuff. But I will only open it to like the special needs things. We are also giving back to the community by having one day open every month that we will be opening up our grooming services to like local rescues. Cause we want to make sure that, cause they need help as well. Like for, I believe, there's a lot of rescues in the area that, you know, they don't have grooming services on hand. And I want them to be able to come and use that. And in terms to all the hair, the extra hair for like, stuff like that, for where people are wondering if you're going to need more trash cans or anything. I'm actually working with a thing called, I forgot what it was called, Matt for a Matter of Trust, which is a company that gets a lot of dog hair, cat hair from local dog grooming businesses. And they help take up all the hair, you ship it to them. And then what they do is make it into oil spill mats that they help collect oil spills. So all of that hair, obviously is going to be donated to them so that we can actually help with the oil spills around the world and stuff like that.
You, you related your hours to our noise ordinance. Why did you do that?
Oh, I did that because, well, one, I want to make sure I can have, I can be open to everybody. So some people, like a lot of people are open, like they wake up at seven in the morning and they want to get their dogs in before, you know, the crowd. Or I also only did that in the morning just because I wanted to be different from all the other grooming salons that are open from 10 o'clock to five o'clock. Or, and I wanted to make sure, to keep people, I wanted to make sure I was very inclusive, so.
Ken, so, I want to ask a question, go ahead.
So regarding the, you meant, you inferred earlier that, that most of your clients would be not driving, but walking?
Correct.
So I suspect some clients will be driving.
Correct.
And so how does that work on Savannah? Do you, would someone go out and meet them? Cause I have concerns, I think we all do, about traffic.
Right.
And a car stopping there and holding up traffic, how would that work?
So in front of our house, we actually, that entire block, aside from the very corner, is all open parking that people can actually park. And we actually get a lot of people from BB Hospital Park in front of our house. And like there's a hair salon lady who, she, the owner, she actually parks in front of there. So it's essentially when they come in, they pick up, they drop off. It'll be like maybe five or 10 minutes at the most of talking and going over the dogs. And then they'll go and leave, do whatever, and then they'll wait for the call or the text or the email, whichever one they've signed up for. And then they'll come back and it's again, it's just literally five to 10 minutes at the most, pick up, drop off. It's give and take. And they're not even going to be there for any extended time, period of time.
But what do you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to just follow up on that. I mean, you mentioned there's parking there, but what if there's no, what if they're all taking?
So there is parking, also all around Savannah, there is parking all the way around.
Right, I understand.
So they can all, so anybody can park there, they can all come and walk there. So essentially, I don't think parking would be such an issue because again, most of my clients will be within the one-mile radius. They can all walk their dogs to my location and stuff. And then also my mom does own a house two doors down with a driveway. And she said if they do ever need to, they could just use her driveway, so.
Other questions? I had a question really for procedure-wise, like if we were to, you know, what if we, in your time in 18 years, have you recalled a time that we've added use permissible at-home businesses? And what was that process? You don't, okay, okay.
I have not.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
This is definitely something, so just everybody knows, there is no parking requirement for home-based businesses. There is, the hours of operation are seven AM to nine PM for all home-based businesses. If you, if you think there are other home-based businesses, you might be interested in looking at, this could be a time to look at that as well.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking whether, yeah, cause I just personally from our process, what we would probably do is have this on, cause we don't, this is one we don't have action for today. And I think it would be hasty for any of us to say, okay, we're going to make, so it's likely you'll appear like on a regular meeting or generally like you came to last time, where we would render a decision. But to Janelle's point, I was wondering whether this might be an opportunity to see like, have there been other requests that have come in?
We have.
You have?
We've had like, like massage therapists having like one table in their, in their house, being able to do that. Other people being able to, not just dog grooming, but to have like one chair for, for hair, like a hair salon, for one chair as a home-based business. Those are typical personal services that are not permitted at this time.
Okay, and I have a question for Alex, like so if we say, okay, you have, cause I think you've mentioned too, like about you'd be the only one in a square mile, you know that one. Are we in a good place as a city to allow unique permit? Meaning we're going to give one grooming permit, we're going to give one of these permits. Are we in a good place as a city to do that?
We are. The one issue we have here is that kennels are listed as prohibited. There's not specifically some things analogous that is allowed. And if you look at 197-11, it says, "A use not specifically listed as a permitted use in a zoning district is prohibited."
Right. You'd have to call it out specifically.
Right, so we'd have to amend the zoning code, which would require a public hearing, but we could do that, okay.
Can you explain? I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe. You're in the historic district.
Correct.
Okay, relate that to signage. I'm concerned about signage.
So of course, we're not going to have any person, any signage that will be permanent. So what we'll do is have, you know how you have a wreath for holidays and stuff? We're going to have a sign that has my name on there with the, with the, at least, or like a dog print or like a dog-related wreath or something like that that we'll put up and then we'll put off, take down every time I'm open and obviously when I'm not open. We are not having anything, we're not going to have any meon lights, we're not going to have any, anything that's permeable cause we do respect the, the historic aspect of our home.
Okay, thank you.
And Janelle, she's correct, this is R5, mixed use?
This is an LC historic, so it's limited commercial. So you can either have the residence, which is what it is now, or you can have commercial, or you can have, but, or you can have like commercial on the first floor and, but you can't have the mix of the use at this point. And it's not a permitted home-based business.
Okay, so that's the conundrum.
The issue is it's not a permitted home-based business.
Right, Andrew, I, Mayor, I'm sorry. I think your approach is right, that we should actually have, now or whomever, Janelle, if this is under, obviously it's a zoning issue, we should look at the code holistically. What we know the trend is, is that more and more people, particularly since COVID, are looking at home businesses. So it seems like it would be timely for us to review and have a public workshop and then eventually a hearing, not just specifically to this one. But this is a great prompt to say, what are, let's revisit this. Are there businesses, you know, and what are the implications? So is there a parking implication? If somebody wanted to have a one-chair hair salon, is there additional water fee that BPW would want to attach to that? So when you're looking at home businesses and mixed zoning, I think, you know, we have the option to always, not at this meeting, but at other meetings to make an action. But I think your approach, Mayor, is the right one, which is, let's revisit this. Let's look at the ones that are allowable, not allowable. And what are any restrictions related that we feel are appropriate? Signage, parking, utility fees, I think that's very, very appropriate. I think the presenter today has given us a lot of good information and I'm sure she would like some kind of timely response. But I, but I do think that we should look at it holistically. There are many more opportunities for folks. And that's encouraging entrepreneurs in our community balanced by residential needs as well.
Fair point. So I do want to take a couple, it looks like, is it Matthew Jurel, General? Matthew, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, do you have a comment for us?
Yes, we're at 403 Savannah, right next door to them. And we just, we just purchased this property last fall in September. And, and was aware of what the conditional use of the zoning is currently and what permissible home businesses are kind of in the area and what is and are not allowed or under lease conditional use. I mean, I concur with everything that's been commented on by everybody on council to begin with, just because I think it needs to be looked at in more depth. I, I do want to just kind of make a very clear point that we object to this business for a lot of reasons. I think one, it could have a property value impact in a negative fashion if we ever would sell or the neighbors would sell. I think traffic is always a concern in Lewis and the drop-off and pickup and possible noise nuisances of just pets coming and going in and out the front door and us having pets too and access. And we, it is a 125-year-old home with thin brick walls, so I don't know how that noise nuisance could be curbed. There was some question about, you know, how are the dogs being curbed when they come out of their, when they come out of their automobiles if they're dropped off or they're being walked down the street? And that's always a concern about hygiene and, and impact from a health study. I think it's too soon to make any decision on it, but I think, you know, we're trying to put a, you know, a square block into a circle hole here and trying to conform what a business should be at home. And I think this is more of a retail commercial use than trying to put it into a residential block where we're all very close in proximity.
Hi, I'm Susan General. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to voice. I, I don't want to, all I want to say is, I did approach the presenter with a clear and kind conversation of that I strongly oppose this. So I want to, if this is a recorded meeting, that I just really want to be really clear. And I don't know if she would like to elaborate the conversation to really clear up any misleading information about what the neighbors' views are. We took time to really discuss our concerns. We did say that we are really respectful to honor this forum that's being presented. I'm really concerned because I don't know if she knew that all, like, a couple of the neighbors were on this. And so I would really like this to be relooked at because it, it seems like there's a lot of rose-colored glasses that's being presented here. But when we really look at this being implemented and the facts, especially the strong opposition of the neighbors collectively, I'm just concerned how this was really presented. The traffic, we all know that that whole area is hard to find parking. I would love for it to be very plentiful for people to drop their pets off, lovely. I think they're trying to make the best of some situation and hopeful. And that's basically how I presented to my neighbor, cause I'm living there. I bought this home right now, I am new to Lewis. But, and I intend to spend quality of my retirement there. Seven AM to nine PM, I don't know if everyone's ever been in, whether you have one dog or two dogs or three dogs in a grooming environment. Sometimes it's very unpredictable. And my big concern is the well-being also of the animals, that we are such close proximity to the firehouse. And I know the dogs along our corridor, some do respond dramatically. There's many things, I'm glad that this will be put in a public forum, but I want to let you know that I had spoke to both of my neighbors kindly and strongly opposed this.
You, you've broached some very important issues. And I had asked earlier, had the neighbors been spoken to about this? And because I was concerned that neighbors would be concerned and I heard that they weren't. But this is a big reality that we need to address. And this is not a standalone home. These are old row homes. And also in many of these old row homes, I will tell you that the air circulates between the row homes. They were not built the way they were. Having owned a row home that had renters, I had a smoker in one area and it was circulating across into the other row homes. This is very serious when you have a business that is, the air circulates, there's just no doubt about it. And there are special systems that can be put in. There are pressurized systems that keep the, the air from circulating. They're, they're very expensive. But I do have concerns and one of the things that I feel needs to be really addressed is that I would like to actually see a list of residents that would be in favor of this. I, I, you know, I, I just-
Yeah, that's what I think with the process that we talked about, I think, you know, having a follow-up process. I also wanted to get Robert Huber, is that Robert Hubert, Huber, is that, do you see that one? Rob, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Hi, my name is Robert Huber, I'm at 407 Savannah Road, I'm right next to Sarah and Stephen. And Sarah and Stephen are lovely people. Sarah's mother is a lovely person. I have a 150-pound mastiff. And having a dog grooming business and all of us, all, even Patty on the end unit, I just have concerns with it. I, I don't, you know, I have lived through their renovation and they've done a great job, but you know, sometimes they start a little early in the morning, but that's okay. I'm, I'm not there all the time, but I'm going to be there permanently. I'm actually leaving as soon as I get off this meeting with you to be down there. I, I object to this.
All right, Robert, appreciate, okay. So what I would suggest is some additional information, maybe provide, and then we'll, you know, in terms of the next step, it may be a broader conversation or it may just be an up and down around this one, is what I would suggest, okay? But I do appreciate you, you coming in, I appreciate you, you know, your investments that you've made into Lewis so far in terms of, you know, your renovations on your house. We look forward to you living there.
Hopefully, yeah.
Appreciate it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next one is the Overfalls Foundation constructs a separate structure in Canalfront Park near the Montemoy Surf Boat to serve as an extension of the Overfalls Museum. Dave, are you representing Overfalls today?
Yes.
You are? You want to come on, come on up and kind of walk us through what you're looking to do? Okay. Yeah, come on.
Good morning, good afternoon, good afternoon. My name's Patrick Lynch and I am a member of the Dirty Hands Gang for the Overfalls. We have, I guess the, the Overfalls Foundation was established in 2000, October 5th of 2000. And it's a nonprofit and our mission is to preserve the Overfalls ship. And in doing that, we have, you know, developed a museum and we are trying to keep that open in honor of the light ships, the sailors of the United States and the maritime history of this community. The operation and display of the light ship Overfalls and all its artifacts. We're trying to provide a world-class museum, an experience that honors the and promotes the values and contributions of the light ship sailors and the history of this country. To obtain national recognition as a, and promote a cultural significance of maritime history in our community, as I've stated already, and to be a good steward of the ship itself. The Overfalls is a national landmark that was established in 2011. And it's- The Overfalls is a national landmark that was established in 2011, and it's been my understanding, what I've learned since I've lived here just like three years now, is that the Canalfront Park was originally planned not only for the birth of the Overfalls, but also a 1,950-square-foot visitor center that would contain offices, restroom facilities, and 1,125 square feet of exhibit hall. The visitor center never materialized. The existing support facilities for the Overfalls consist of 200 square feet of museum and store and approximately a 90-foot square shed with a little fenced-in area in the back. These facilities are not adequate to provide what we need to maintain the Overfalls. Our concept is to remove the existing shed and storage area and build a completely new enclosed 480-square-foot accessory building to be known as the Light Ship Overfalls Museum Support Building, to provide additional museum exhibits in this space, and to provide an enclosed workshop facility for the preservation and maintenance of the Light Ship Overfalls Museum. The new facility is to be located between the existing basketball court and our existing pavilion for the Montemoy. We have spent a lot of time on working on the aesthetics of what we're proposing to try to minimize any impact of the open space and also to have it blend with the surrounding area. What you see, I'm watching the screen behind you, scroll through. As you can see, the face of this building with the two doors will face toward the pavilion of the Montemoy. And then we'll have little personnel doors on either end, just to access without opening the larger doors. The building we're proposing is 12 by 40. It is built, I've met with John and Janet a couple times to find out what we needed to do to meet the requirements of the flood plane. And I think we have a flood elevation of six at that area, AE 6. What we have proposed is to put in a turned-down concrete slab, bring up the block walls to five courses, which will put us up about 40 inches, which allows us to meet the new standard for the flood, for structural, in your flood zones. The portion of the building will be used for the workshop, and the other portion will be used for the supplies that we need to maintain the ship and also for historical exhibits. Is there any questions that you may have regarding infrastructure?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to get off to you.
That area is very historic, and I see you have some, the siding on the top looks like board and batten, which would be, seems like it would match the historic area. The block on the bottom, if it's raw block, it would look kind of like a modern material. Are you going to stucco it, or are you going to put brick over it?
The plan was, for budget purposes right now, we have planned on paring that smooth surface all the way around so that it can be painted to blend in. When I did the original design, I picked up the board and batten off of the life-saving station.
Yes.
Okay? That is not board and batten. It is a cement board with AZEC strips on it so that it will be rock proof. And all the trim, exterior trim and everything, is also designed to be AZEC.
Sure. Yeah, that was my only concern. I thought the raw block might not look the greatest down.
We have discussed the possibility, and really, it's a matter of funding. We've applied for grants to build the building, but at this point in time, we've not gotten any commitment for grant money to build it. We have also started soliciting different suppliers around the area to see if they would donate, get as many donated materials as we can to build the building. And one concept that was discussed was actually using a split-face block around the bottom of the building, if we can have that donation made to us.
I have a few questions when we're ready. Go ahead, so, it's kind of hard virtually to know when any of my colleagues are done. I apologize, not trying to interrupt anybody that's already asking questions.
No, not a problem.
I'll follow you, maybe.
Yeah. So that was my concern. I notice you put the flood relief things in there. That's great.
Yes.
And the split block, I think some of that split block, again, can look very-
Commercial.
Modern, very commercial. And I think it's important, at least, that's my value.
I agree with you.
The others would have to concur. Did it not look commercial? Did it look old?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, sure.
The block that I'm visualizing being used for this is the plain color, the gray, that just has the face rounded off, as you see on some of the foundations around here.
Well, I'm not really prepared to look at it. That might be something that we'd want to review to make sure it fit in.
That's not what's proposed at this time, but has been a discussion. Right now, the proposal is to do standard block with paring over it.
Amy, did you have a couple of questions?
I do. I do. Thank you, Mayor. So I want to just address on the floodproofing, when the final subcommittee was researching the different opportunities and recommendations, we specifically gave commercial a pass, and I put that in quotes, because we said, "Commercial buildings have a lot of floodproofing opportunities," and so they weren't categorized, and Janelle could follow up on that. So I'm only saying to you, not that I would disagree that everybody should be elevated, of course, I'm like the poster child for that, but the fact is, you have more flexibility as a commercial. That's one thing I just wanted to share. Second, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah. And secondly, I love the Overfalls, I want to just say that publicly, but you're in open space. Yes, museums are an acceptable part of open space, but it has to be the primary reason. In other words, if how you're looking at it is, oh, we'll add some artifacts, that's really not why museums were given the privilege to, open space is a critical community asset, and so I fully understand your need for a workshop, and I understand all of that, but you are actually in a, in prime open space. And so if that's how you're approaching it, then, A, you would really need to make this a museum, which would also change kind of the design, because I'm not commenting engineering on your design, and I don't have the skills to do that. But it would have to look like a museum. You know, in other words, welcoming you like a museum, displays and activities. So if that's the intent, then I do think you and your colleagues do have to really look at that aspect. Or I'd like to hear more about how you would actually use this for primarily a museum so that you are in compliance with our open space regulations on what's allowable.
As I have looked at your codes, and I won't say that I have the depth of knowledge that you do, but we, accessory buildings to support the museum, I believe, is allowed in the space. And this is a support building for the Overfalls ship. We're trying to remove a lot of what, there's rooms on the ship that we have a lot of materials stored in that can't be on exhibit to the public. So in answer to your question, if this doesn't look like a museum, I agree with you, but we're trying to open up more space on the ship, removing artifacts from there, or supplies from there to store elsewhere, so that we can open up more of the ship to the public for display.
I mean, I love the idea of the ship being opened for more. I think that's fantastic. I'm not sure that meets the intent of code, but I just wanted to put that question out there for consideration, and maybe it's a slight rethink on your proposal or look of the building. But I'll defer to Janelle and others in terms of open space. I know enough to be dangerous, but Janelle is the expert on our codes on this.
There is one other thing that I would like to bring up, and as a member of, as ex-postfissio for H. Park Historical Group, I don't know whether any of this would fall under their jurisdiction, but one of the things that they try to do is make sure that our streetscapes or the scape blends in. So again, would they, and I'm throwing this out, would they have any jurisdiction over making sure that it looks historic?
No. No, we did present this to the Park and Recreation Committee, I don't know if it was earlier this month than the last month, and they agreed with the concept, the idea, and liked it, and they thought that it blended well, I think, with the park setting, because we are screened by the basketball court and the pavilion. It's tucked in between those two. Can we slide back to the site plan, please? That may be helpful.
Okay.
So what we're proposing to put the building is, if you look, let me go over here.
Oh, man, he came with his laser.
That's the existing shed with the fenced-in area in the back. Okay? And to the right of that is the existing Montemoy Pavilion. What's being proposed is-
Patrick, you might just go to the mic, because it's because of people online, they can't hear you. Yeah, they won't be able to hear you.
So to the right side is the Montemoy Pavilion with the proposed, with the new proposed building, over to the right.
One of the questions I had, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is, what is the-
That's the proposed building there.
And what is the height of your proposed building?
The, it's similar in height to that of the pavilion.
Similar in, like, six inches?
Within four inches.
Within four? And do you know what that height is?
I think it's around 18 feet. I think I do have a-
So 18 feet, plus or minus several inches?
Yes.
Right? Okay.
And I did look at, I did look at the slope, the pitch of the roof in different elevations.
Yeah.
And what I had problems with in looking at it, but you see on the sheet, there's, I'm not used to being on a leash like this. That sheet shows different roof pitches, and it-
Outfalls, I think, right? When you say the inlets, do you mean the outfalls? Or?
No, the inlets in the park. There's one located, there's one located at the, where the water fountain is on the northwest corner of the park where the road comes down.
Right.
There's another inlet located on the northeast corner, a small one there that goes underneath. And both of those come right up to the grate when we get a high tide.
Okay.
And then the area between the existing shed and the basketball court, that area undulates and traps a lot of water.
Yep.
Okay? And in talking with Rodney Robbins, right, he and I spoke about how to handle stormwater runoff from this building, and he concurred with me that we should just do surface drainage and do some re-grading to get it to the canal.
What does that look like?
What's that?
I mean, so would you be affecting the grade all the way to the canal?
No, no. We would not touch anything. Our footprint will be probably two feet outside the area of where our building's proposed, three feet, because we're going to excavate down to form up and pour the concrete slab.
But one of my concerns that I, is the, is very much about the runoff coming from that building into that site that we know is frequently waterlogged. And if I'm reading this, and it's tough for me to do so with my old eyes, but it looks like there's only a five-foot separation between the pavilion and the shed. Is that, am I reading that?
It's actually less than that.
Oh, it's less than that? So they're even closer?
It's about four feet.
Okay.
Okay, and that is to be a concrete or paved area in between those two.
So you would actually pave between, connect?
Yes. And we've, because of John's suggestion, we've added gutters and downspout to the proposed structure.
Yeah, and I noticed that was also included now. Right. But what is the run, where is that water going to run? I'm going to call that the backside of the pavilion. Is that correct? Where is that water going, going to go?
That water will, some-
If it's hitting concrete and where is-
Well, it'll drain, it'll drain toward the parking area, and some will drain toward the playground area.
So you'll be sloping that concrete?
The way it drains now, but we are creating a more impervious area. But what I, in the studies I've been involved in with this, and I, by the degree I'm an engineer, by trade, I'm a carpenter, okay? So, you know, I have world experience in putting into that. You can see what's going to happen. Anytime you're near a body of water where you have development behind you, say, away from that body of water, it's been my understanding that it's best to release the water that's close to the water body, on a controlled matter. Filter it through some sort of, you do it through a wildlife area where the artwork was and all that. Get that water away, because any detention of that water is only going to attenuate the peaks of the storm and create flooding for you.
Right.
Okay? The fact that we have inundation in the park with the tides.
Yep.
We have to let it work, what Mother Nature wants to do.
Right. Yeah. All right. Well, I have to get comfortable with that idea. The other question I have, and this might be a question that I need to, I noticed that John Robitaille, our building inspector's here, and this might be something that he, I'm going to direct it to you, but he might be the person-
I appreciate his assistance.
Yeah, he might have to answer it. And that, the question is, and I'm showing how little I know, but the fact that you're suggesting a mixed-use building that is storage and also storage of equipment, storage of materials that are used on the ship, and you're suggesting now also a museum display, does our building, has John spoken to the safety issue associated with what materials you might be restoring in that building, in that, and if it's a museum space, is suggested that the public is going to be invited into that space?
We can use the outside areas for displays. We can store artifacts and what have you on the other side also.
On the other side of what?
What, part of the space being allocated inside.
As being partitioned?
Partitioned, because we have a partition in there because there was a concern on wind forces on the wall. So there's a sheer wall halfway in between, just to bridge the wall because of the length of the wall.
All right. John, could you speak to the safety issue? And I'm speaking about the chemicals, possibly. I'm suggesting that there could be chemicals stored in this building and-
John Robitaille, City of Lewis Building Official.
You understand where I'm going with my questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
I understand where you're going.
And ventilation?
We hadn't actually addressed that in the last conversation I had with the Overfalls folks was March 5th of this year. We met on-site. What was actually going in the building was not specifically addressed. The museum component was not addressed. Storage, it was mainly going to be storage. An increase in size from an existing eight-foot-by-10-foot building and an eight-foot-by-10-foot fenced-in area would be removed, and the 12-foot-by-40-foot building would be constructed. To clarify, this is in the AE 7 flood zone, and the finished grade in his drawings is six foot. So we are definitely looking at a flooding potential here.
It's AE 7? I thought it was AE 6.
It's AE 7.
Oh, okay.
So it's AE 7 flood zone, right?
Yes.
And John, he has many opportunities. I mean, should they build a commercial building? Though, again, I really question this in open space, to be really honest, particularly if it's, as it was presented to you, John, it was for storage and maybe workshop, so that doesn't sound like a museum. But they have floodproofing things they can do, not just elevation. I mean, if they choose to do elevation, but should something like this get a waiver or however it could be in open space, should that be decided? They have other choices, correct?
Yes, there are other options available.
We have, with the block and the floodgates, that we should meet any of the floodproofing requirements of the waters.
Yeah, you need to speak to that.
Can you explain the difference between AE 6 and the 7? Like, how much more dramatic is 7 than 6 in terms of water?
Simple answer, 12 inches, one foot.
Oh, it's a whole foot?
Yes.
That means-
So AE 6 is, your flooding is approximately six feet above sea level. AE 7, you're looking at approximately, and I'm not trying to talk down or anything, I'm just trying to dumb it down for-
Yeah, I need the help.
It would be literally, floodwaters could conceivably be as high as seven foot above sea level.
So where is the sea level mark in the park, in that area? How do you know where you're starting from?
Well, the drawing submitted has a site grade of six foot.
I see.
So above sea level, the datum is- So above sea level, all, there, the datum is sea level. Basically, you would be looking at a minimum of twelve inches of floodwater-
Oh, okay.
From the six-foot level to the seven-foot level. Our freeboard requirement is thirty-six inches, so there would have to be at least- Come, I'm sorry, I've been corrected, it's eighteen, it's commercial.
All right.
I'm thinking residential, my mistake. So the freeboard level would be, the floodproofing would be required to a point at eight-point-five feet above sea level.
Okay. So that's where the floor level would be, correct?
No, the floor level could be lower.
Uh-huh.
You have the flood vents and the floodproof, other floodproofing options available to, not so much prevent the floods from coming in, but to, so that you're equalizing the pressure inside the building and outside the building, so you don't have as much catastrophic building damage.
Okay.
Janelle, what do you need from us? Like, we don't have an action item on this, is this just more for our information?
I'm going to turn that over to Ellen Lorraine and Janet, um, because it's coming from them. From, from a building perspective, we'd need an administrative site plan and then a building permit if this is something that you want to move forward with.
That's what-
Yeah, I think there's just discussion to have it presented to council and then this can get added on the July 8th council meeting for approval.
Or action.
Action, sorry.
Another option would be, uh, council could decide to send this to the planning commission. This is city land, um, and the city has the consent to any improvements.
That's something that Khalil had mentioned to me.
Yeah.
I, I would agree with that, with Alex's recommendation, because I think the planning commission, particularly because they're just working now on open space updates, I think the planning commission would very much want to weigh in on this. So I, I like Alex's recommendation and then, then it could go through that normal process and come back to us.
Or could we instruct staff through this workshop to send it there next?
We could instruct staff to do that, there's no action item on the agenda, so shouldn't take any.
Okay.
I, I agree. You could just simply buy-
I agree, because that's what we're using them for.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're helping us with-
Yeah, okay.
Interesting.
So I appreciate, but I think that's what we'll do, because these, to mention, they're working on uses of open space and they know these, uh, they, they know these things deeper than us, they're like our saducies, you know?
Okay, okay, okay. When we were at the Park and Rec Committee, I thought we were pretty much okay with our use in what we were proposing, or is that, am I mistaken on that?
So in early discussions, um, we had reviewed what conditional uses-
Okay.
Were permitted in open space. And the clear direction was museum. And through course of time and presentation, that use has morphed to a workshop and storage of exhibits.
Okay.
So there has been a disconnect from early discussions to where you are now.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, very good. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Patrick, a very good presentation.
Patrick, thank you.
Appreciate the Overfalls group as well. Okay, so this then, um, our next agenda item, we've made it there. Helene, I appreciate your patience.
I'm going to read it aloud.
Yeah, but this is, um, discussion regarding a request from Historic Lewis Farmers Market to have a petting zoo, because they have two bottle-fed lambs at Children's Day on August 17th, so.
Hello, thank you for the time, I'm Helene Harris, President of the Historic Lewis Farmers Market. And I'm not going to read this whole letter I've already sent to you guys because of the time, okay? But I wanted to just say that, uh, we have, are going to hold our annual Kids' Day at the market August 17th. Last year we had four hundred and eighty-three children attend Kids' Day at the market. The primary reason for having this day is to help educate children about how farms operate, what is grown locally, and the importance of sustainable farming to the environment. This year we have the opportunity of having two three-month-old bottle lambs brought to Kids' Day at the market, and we wanted to have the city's permission to bring them to this special market event so that children can actually see and pet a farm animal. The lambs will be kept under a ten-by-tent tent within a small puppy run, so they're contained. And Laura Brittingham, who owns the lambs of Brittingham Farms, will sit in the run with the lambs so that children can come in one by one and visit for a short period of time. The lambs are from Laura's farm, she has experience in introducing children to farm animals from events at her own farm and events featuring the Brittingham Sheet at the Lewis Historical Society, which is, I think, has happened during the last three years, as well as other events. We're going to provide volunteers to make sure children understand rules about visiting farm animals and to see that, uh, children wash their hands after visiting the lambs. We'll be responsible for the cleanup of the area, uh, which will only involve a very small area of the park. The lamb tent will be next to the Brittingham Farms tent. I've sent you guys a, a market map, though it's not at scale, by the way. In addition, we have contacted the state of Delaware to see if we needed a permit from the state, and that is required. And we're also in touch with Dr. Doug Riley, Delaware State Veterinarian, for additional advice on signage and any other recommendations he might have. The whole purpose of this is to help educate kids about keeping animals safe and protected and give them a hands-on experience with farm animals, to give them an awareness of farm animals, um, to, it's a multi-sensory thing for kids love to do this. And that's all I have to say, and I'm here to answer any questions.
I have one, I, I just want to make sure I-
Sure.
Heard you correctly. Did you, uh, in the people you contacted, in the different state agencies and so forth, that included the Health Department, is that correct?
Delaware Department of Agriculture, and they looked at it and they said that we should contact and be in touch with the Delaware State Veterinarian-
I see.
To see, to get extra recommendations, which I think is a great idea.
Sure, and that's, you've, you've done that?
Yes.
And-
No concern?
And no concern.
There's no concerns that I know of, we want to talk to them, um, more in-depth about the, the signage that we have about, that's pertaining to the animals.
In, in my experience, uh, running schools, we had groups like this come in and it was wonderful for the children to interact with these animals in a, in a protected environment. I, I, I think it's a great opportunity for our, our young children in, in the area here, and, uh, I would be supportive of it. My only question would be, we, we always required when someone came in as a presenter that they had a certificate of insurance in case somebody got hurt.
Oh, yes, uh, we have a COI with the city already and all of our vendors have COIs with Historic Lewis Farmers Market.
And have you spoken to your insurance carrier about maybe a rider for the fact that an an-
I haven't, but I, I can't believe that we would have to have a rider, but I will.
That would be very helpful.
Yeah.
I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
I guess I had the same question I had before.
I mean, it is a liability-
Yeah.
And we have an umbrella, we also have an umbrella policy.
Sure, I understand, it would just be helpful to make sure that's clarified or secured.
Do we need, like, an uptown, like, if this doesn't call for action, so just simple, I mean, how do you, how do you anticipate us moving forward for, with this request?
I, I would suggest to go on the July agenda for action.
For action?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
And it's a one-time?
It's a one-time thing, right?
Yes.
Tell me something, where do all these children come from, who you expect are dead?
Well, I think that, um, they come from all over and they really love the market and kid, and parents like to bring their kids, especially Kids' Day.
We have an elementary school.
I understand that, but when I have gone to market on Saturday mornings-
Right.
I see mostly adults or adult, you know, adult-age people there, I'll put it that way.
I think that's really changed. And they really market this, I mean, the Historic, the Farmers Market did a great job, I know we were there representing the city with eco footprints last year, and they really market this to families, they reach out to the library, so they're reaching out to our next generation. This is really the youth day at the markets, you're right, it's not the normal, um, my age.
Yeah, that's all, that's all I want to say.
This is really a fabulous opportunity to interact, to educate, so the whole Kids' Day program is absolutely educational, particularly when a lot of the kids have no farm experience, they don't know what, how plants grow, you know? They don't know any of that, so that's why, that's where all these kids come from, they come actually through great marketing from the Historic Farmers Market team.
I also, uh, we've seen actually a growth in families at the market. And, and this kind of, and having this activity says to, uh, parents and, and kids, we really encourage you to come. So then they come and they love it and then they, you know, come again.
Thank you.
Okay? Any other questions?
Well, this did bring to my attention that apparently this has happened in the city.
Yes.
And thank you for asking, but, yeah, it's happened, so.
Well, there is a precedent.
I think we just said it.
So I don't want, I, I actually had called LA just to kind of find out how-
They didn't do it.
They didn't do anything?
I, I don't know if they came before the council or not, I don't know.
Just one quick question.
Yes.
When you spoke with the Department of Agriculture, did they mention any regulations relating to hand washing or distance from the food? I just want to make sure.
It's, I believe that we have to be at least twenty feet away from food, there's no food in the Brittingham, um, tent, and we're at least, I believe, thirty feet plus away from any other vendors who have food.
But your people are getting all that information and making sure that whatever you do is compliant with-
Right, and we will, we actually have a hand washing station that we use at the market, and we will have that hand washing station at this location, plus hand sanitizer and volunteers.
And Helene, if we make our decision by July, is that enough time for you to organize and get advertising out and?
As soon as possible would be, because we're going to start doing flyers, I think this would be a big draw for Kids' Day. In fact, we're actually really talking about how we're going to handle the kids and the crowds and push them to other areas and-
Is there anything strongly objecting to, right now?
Not me.
Maybe we could let, Amy, do you think that we could let staff do it, or you want to call it to, what are your thoughts?
I, I actually think we could vote today, giving them the time they need. Um, or at least ask, see, see what the vote is among us. I, I feel so, and, you know, then-
Strongly objecting to that, or we could take a vote.
The farmers market has to follow up with all of those health-related requirements that number those prayers.
And because it's not allowed in our code, we would, we would need council action, right?
Right.
Well, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, I think that, I mean, yeah, I think, that's what I'm telling you, I think July 8th is really the earliest we can do.
Okay, well, we appreciate it and we'll work around you guys.
Right, it's a little over a week away.
I appreciate, but I think you could start maybe designing the flyers.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for-
And birthing those lambs, too.
I think these are all great questions, too, so we, we appreciate it, too.
I appreciate you.
We thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, so the last one, I think, um, is really staff to update us on what's your submission to the state for the comp plan, so.
I'll just say a few words and then Janelle can take it over, but this is an annual report that is submitted to the state on an update of our comprehensive plan. Janelle completes this, uh, for us, and it is due tomorrow. So this is more of an informational, um, session just to share with council and the public, uh, the update that will be submitted.
So what this does is, it takes all the recommendations in the comprehensive plan, every single one of them is in the, in here, by the, the chapter, the category, so like Community Facilities Plan, there was one recommendation, and it tells you, um, where it is. Now, it's not we've completed these this year, this is the ongoing, since it was adopted in 2017, as to where we are with all of the recommendations. So it says, hey, we've completed it, or it's ongoing, if there's nothing in front of it, it just means you haven't addressed it yet, and that's okay. From a planning perspective, if you get to like half of your recommendations, your comprehensive plan, you have done an outstanding job. And that's for every community that has a comprehensive plan. So this is just an update of kind of where we are, the state kind of wants to know where we are, what we've done. This does go on the Planning Development webpage, uh, it's called the Annual Report to the State, so last year's is on the webpage and it'll be replaced with this year's. We do highlight, uh, some of the key things that have happened, um, some of the key ones, especially for our environment, is the mayor and council, you adopted, um, the free board, you amended the impervious, impervious definitions, you relooked at lot coverage, so those are all big things that were, were addressed this year, um, that kind of impacted, um, the environmental development of this. And then typically the state is asking, do we need any technical assistance regarding housing, you know, any projects that we're going on? So I made them aware of the, um, ADU ordinance that is now going through the, the city's process, that you're looking at that, um, and then let them know what are the other, like, subcommittees are working on that are, have, um, recommendations regarding anything in the comprehensive plan. So let them know if, like, we need help, we will reach out, but at this time we're not reaching out for any assistance. And then it just looks for updated, um, council member information, planning commission names and information, so they have a good record of who's, who's that, who's on, on the council and then the commission. And I'm happy to answer any questions, um-
With regards, uh, Janelle, to open space, I don't, is there any mention in there of certainly the, the, the cities as well as the communities' effort to preserve the, um, Fourth Street Preserve?
So I did not do that because, uh, based on, let me give it to you, that chapter,
That's a privately-led-
Yes.
Effort, however, the city has committed substantial funds towards that.
So your environmental protection items, that really doesn't fall into that? All the work you've done on, on the tree ordinances, um, falls into the recommendations that are in the comprehensive plan? Because really, they're not looking, that is kind of separate from one of the recommendations that's in the comprehensive plan. This is really like, um, uh, one of them is working with, um, state and local authorities to raise road and bridge levels, including the Canary Creek Bridge and Savannah Road on the beachside, to reduce, um, road flooding and improve evacuation capacity. That is the recommendations in the comprehensive plan, and that's, um, one of those that's ongoing, because you're continually meeting with Delta and Denrick on how to address the evacuation routes, so that's something that's, that's already in there.
So it has to be specific?
It's specific on, based on the recommendations that were, that are already in the comprehensive plan.
Right.
So that's, that's what we're providing an update on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Seems odd, because just saying in the comprehensive plan that we are committed to open space preservation, and we now have an, an, an action item that we're pursuing, i.e., you know, wouldn't that satisfy that, hey, we're actually doing what we said we would do?
I, I agree, I, I agree with Councilman Saliba. So, Janelle, maybe there isn't like a specific recommendation area, or maybe it's in the cover memo, but updates are also, just as you said, it's about teeing up, we're, not only are we compliant and moving forward, but we're actually taking leadership. We have an open sa- open space subcommittee that we're reviewing, our planning commission is reviewing, and I think what Councilman Saliba says is right, it should be there to say, and we've invested in this effort led privately, but that the city is committing funds, so because it is-
Page five, bullet point three.
Yeah, a bullet or two, it, it just seems like it does need to be somewhere in there. The other thing is, um, wetlands, I don't know if you mentioned that, but we've got wetlands through the process, ready to go out for a public hearing as well, but I would like the Fourth Street to be in there.
I can add that, that's not a problem.
So maybe just at the second bullet point, where you said the planning commissions, open space committee, then bullet point, the city is also engaged in a-
And has, has, um, proffered funds to assist.
Yes, exactly, to invest and assist in-
Seven hundred and fifty thousand, I mean, substantial funds.
Yeah.
Okay.
Richard, come on up.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
Just reintroduce yourself, we didn't hear nothing. Call us Congressman again.
Louis resident and on the planning commission, just a couple of quick things, I know I'm standing between people in their lunch here, oh, it's a dangerous place to be.
That is dangerous.
I just wanted to reinforce that, uh, back to an earlier discussion about the overfalls, I just wanted to reinforce that, back to an earlier discussion about the overfalls. We do have the open space subcommittee. We lost a critical member of that because she was promoted to this body, but we are still carrying on some very important work there. And I do think that we will be able to add some value to the discussion of the additional building, the presentation on the overfalls. So we're looking at a lot there that we're going to forward some recommendations to this body. And we're looking at other statutes, other ordinances have been done. And I just want to let you know there's a lot of good work going on in that subcommittee. Secondly, with the report that Janelle has just briefed on, one of the new questions there, number four, has to do with technical assistance from the state. And as we move forward here, we are a coastal community. We are the front lines here of what is happening with sea level rise and coastal flooding. And we are going to need technical assistance, not only from the state, but from the federal government as well. And I just think that it's an important consideration that we need to be vocal on because it's real. It's real. We're seeing it happening right now. So I just think that as we move forward with our comprehensive plan, of course, which the planning commission is going to be deeply involved in, that is going to be a front and center issue that we're going to be dealing with as a city. So I just wanted... That's on everybody's radar, but here's another opportunity where it's brought up in this request that we got and in the report that Janelle is asking you to approve today. So anyway, I'll leave it there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So I think we made the one addition to the letter. Any other comments? No one's raising their hand? So with that, I will make a call to the public then for public comment. Bill, nothing from you?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Rich's comment about lunch resonated with you? Okay. All right, with that then, we do have a couple of things to just talk about in executive session. So can I get a motion for the council to move into an executive session?